Good morning, everyone. We will call to order the December 13th Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, and we will begin by establishing a quorum, please.
Mr. Bathers?
Here.
Ms. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Huff?
Here.
Mr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Klosick? Commissioner Gordon is going to be our ex officio, he's not here today. Secretary Eisenberg?
Here.
Mr. Chair, please let the record reflect that six members are present, and we do have a quorum.
Very good, thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And moving on to item four of our agenda is review and approval of the agenda itself. Do we have any changes to it?
No, there are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. I'd be happy to entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as presented. Make the motion, we approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. The agenda stands approved as presented. Item five is review and approval of minutes from November 15th and December 7th. Does anyone have any edits or corrections to those minutes?
I have none, and I move we approve the minutes.
A second.
All right, motion to, and a second to approve the minutes, November 15th, December 7th, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes stand approved. I have the November 15th minutes here, so I will sign those as we speak. Item six, Commission Member Reports. I have nothing to report today. Typically, we would ask our Commissioner to report, but I understand he's not here. Any other members have anything to report?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, thank you all. Move on to item seven, which is the Administrative Report. Madam Secretary?
All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here this morning. As Laura had mentioned, Commissioner Gordon will be our new ex officio to the Planning and Zoning Commission. He was unable to be here today, but we'll be at our January 17th meeting, which is the next meeting. We are not having our January 4th, our first Wednesday of the month, meeting, given that we're just coming out of New Year's and things like that. So, giving you all a little break as we start off the new year, but we look forward to welcoming him prior to that meeting, and also having an internal meeting with him, kind of getting him up to speed about all the work that you all do. So with that, extensions, and then Laura Mathias, I think she has one extension to update you on. We have a very busy agenda, so we're just going to roll right into it.
That's fine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have one extension. It is a site plan entitled Cabic Corner. This was a contractor equipment storage yard. It's the third extension for this project, and it's in Commissioner District Four. That's it.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Laura. And next, Abigail Rogers with Board of Zoning Appeal Cases.
Morning.
Good morning.
So, we just have one BZA case that's going to be heard on January 3rd. It's Metro Bobcat, and it's for a vehicle sales lot on 33 West Old Liberty Street, Sykesville, in Commissioner District Four. And it's three acres in the C2 zone. And previously, I think I might have already gone over this, but there was the Hockstad Properties case, and that was heard on November 30th. It was for a contractor's equipment storage yard northeast of Hanover Pike up in Manchester, and it was found consistent.
All right, great. Thank you, Abigail.
Thank you.
So with that, that's all I have. Thank you all so much, and I'm going to wish you all a happy holiday season and a very happy new year, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Same to you. We'll move on to item eight, which is rezoning case number 228, Eldersburg Investors II LLC.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can we turn the sound system up a little bit?
I don't know. Are we able to turn the sound system up a little bit?
I don't think so. Everyone can just talk a little louder and into the microphones, is that more helpful?
Maybe, I'll try.
We'll do what we can. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, as introduced, this is rezoning case 228. This is just an introduction. The applicant, sorry, here if you want to introduce yourself.
Sure. Thank you, Hannah. If I can, I'll step up here. Kelly Schaefer Miller, 73, East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland 21157. And I'm here on behalf of Eldersburg Investors. I have Matt Taylor with me as well, just here, and happy to answer any questions that you might have. We understand this is a very brief introduction, but if there are any preliminary questions, we are here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, just as I said, this is an introduction. This rezoning is in the Eldersburg area in Commissioner District Five. It involves four separate parcels that are currently zoned C2. You can see we are south of Maryland 26, and you can see Liberty Exchange right across the street, and locating ourselves. The four acre, the four parcels total 12.47 acres, and they are all zoned C2. The request is to rezone all four parcels to C3.
One quick question for you. Weren't those parcels subject to discussion when we did the master plan?
Correct, yes. So these three parcels to the left, not parcel 222, these three were rezoned from R20,000 to C2, and that was adopted in 2021.
And the position is that that was a mistake?
That they have not submitted an official correction of their petition, so they're still working out their arguments.
Okay. Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, and I was going to get to it, but this will be discussed further in January, and you'll have your staff report packet by then.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So as you can see, all four parcels are zoned C2. They total around 12 acres, and you can see all of the different zoning districts in the area. We have R20,000 Conservation, I-1, more C2 to, on the east side of Maryland 26, more I-1 across the street with Liberty Exchange, R40,000 across Maryland 26 as well. So the next steps, as I said, this will be up for further discussion at the January 17th Planning Commission meeting. At that point, we will be hearing the arguments presented by the applicant, as well as the staff conclusions, and we will be looking for a favorable or unfavorable recommendation from you all to the county commissioners. And we have no dates scheduled right now with the county commissioners.
All right. Anything else?
Nope, that's it for me.
All right. Well, we appreciate counsel being here, and Mr. Taylor being here, and I think, given that this is an introduction, unless anyone has any particular questions, we're happy to wait until January to have the discussion, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item nine, which is rezoning case number 229, Hutton Street 21 LLC. This is a discussion.
For the record, Clark Schaefer, 73 East Main Street, on behalf of the applicant. I have here with me John Lombardo, who's a principal with Hutton, and Mark Zimmerman, who was our land use consultant engineer. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and get started. This was introduced to you all at your last Wednesday virtual meeting, December 7th. Like I said, it was just an introduction, and today we are here for discussion and a recommendation to the county commissioners. So again, this property is located in the Eldersburg area, inside Commissioner District Five. We are north of Maryland 26th, and just east of the Georgetown Boulevard intersection with Maryland 26. This parcel is approximately 2.6 acres, but the area to be rezoned is only 1.9 acres. The zoning is split between C2 and R20,000, and the request is to rezone the R20,000 portion to C2, which would make the entire 2.6 acres C2. So here is the existing zoning. The property has actually been split zoned between commercial and residential since 1965. The surrounding area, as you can see, is a mix of residential and commercial, and that zoning has been consistent also since 1965. So as with every rezoning we receive, we send out a transmittal for agency comments. These are the list of agencies we sent the transmittal to. I will note, we sent the transmittal to the Baltimore Metropolitan Council, specifically the Reservoir Technical Group, because this property does lie inside the Liberty Reservoir. We received no comments from any agencies. Okay. So getting into the arguments, the applicant is arguing a mistake in the current zoning. The current existing C2 zoning line splits the property and goes through an existing commercial structure. It was a mistake to locate a zoning line and/or confirm the previous zoning line in such a manner. The R20,000 zoning designation on the back portion of the property was adopted in whole or in part because of the mistaken belief that a strip of land existed at the back of the property. This strip of land would provide future access for residential purposes to the back portion of the property. This access strip is mistakenly shown as existing in tax maps and official county zoning maps, but it does not exist. The access strip was consolidated into the northern parcels in 1971. The petitioner also alleges the R20,000 portion of the property as currently zoned is virtually unusable. Its only access would be via a residential driveway onto Maryland 26, leading through the commercially zoned and commercially developed portion of the property. The existing C2 zoned property is less than 180 feet deep, meaning that is not deep enough for development of a reasonable planned commercial project. So that was the petitioner's arguments, and these are the staff conclusions. Staff believe there was a mistake in the last comprehensive rezoning, applying the R20,000 designation to the rear part of the property due to the information available to staff. At the time of the last comprehensive rezoning, the Department of Planning believed that the .2 acre strip did exist to the rear of the subject property. This strip was thought to provide residence of the R20,000 zoned portion of the property if it was to be developed, with more connectivity to the surrounding area. The strip does indeed not exist and was consolidated in 1971 to the northern properties. At the time of the last comprehensive rezoning, there was an existing fuel station and car wash on the C2 portion of the property. This car wash and fuel station is still on the property. So if the R20,000 zoned portion of the property was developed residentially, the only access would be a driveway onto Liberty Road through the commercially developed portion of the property. Because of its limited access, the development would contradict planning principles. So this is just a zoom in of the access strip that was discussed by the applicant and by staff. This strip is in the green box located to the rear of the property. This strip does not exist, and so the rezoning parcel is 100% adjoining the two northern parcels. So all of the tax and county zoning maps were showing this strip as existing, though it was consolidated in 1971. So that's it for the arguments. Today, we are here for a discussion and recommendation to the county commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners' dates are as follows. January 12th, we are introducing and requesting to go to public hearing. February 2nd is the public hearing, and then we have February 9th scheduled for further discussion and decision if they need it. So that's it for my presentation, if you want to...
No, that's good. Thank you, Ms. Webber. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, thank you. If I may, briefly, may I approach? I want to show you an old plat that you probably can't see from here.
Sure, yes.
Thank you. Okay, just wait, I wasn't sure, I didn't know what I was going with that.
This is, if you can see, this is an old subdivision plat. That shows the strip that doesn't exist. And so that's how, that's how the error was carried forward on the tax maps, even after this strip was absorbed into those two adjoining residential lots by deed. So that, I just wanted to illustrate by virtue of the old plat.
Thank you, yes.
So, this is Clark Schaefer speaking. This is a classic, if there is such a thing, mistake case. Not only is there a mistake of fact, namely whether or not this strip existed, but that mistake, and in every case, I don't want you to get the impression every case has to meet this high standard, because I handle other cases. But in this case, that mistake goes directly, bears directly on the actual zoning decision, because it's, it's not a stretch, and I think Planning supports this, obviously, to infer that the zoning authority kept this R20 because they thought it had access from the rear. If they, if they, that body, would have known that that, that it did not, and then would have known, as staff points out in its report, that the only access to this is through the existing gas station in the front. No planner in their right mind, unless there were some unusual circumstances, would have then said, "Well, that's fine. Oh, that works. We'll just zone it residential, and the driveway will come through the, through the, through the gas station." So, we believe this is a clear case, and we believe that, and in addition, in this case, no, I don't know whether it was a Scrivener, I call it a Scrivener's error or a mapping error, no one would have drawn the zoning line through, through the end of an existing building, because the existing zoning line runs through, as best we can scale it, through the back end of that existing gas station. The appropriateness of the C2 zoning is almost self-evident. It's, it's all up and down that road. This gives enough depth to do a, redevelop the parcel, frankly, which is what my client intends to do, and to remove the existing gas station, take the tanks out, which is going to be a plus, and operate a car wash there, which obviously would go through a site plan process and have to meet all the modern environmental standards, all the landscaping, all the setbacks and everything else as it went through. But we respectfully request your recommendation to the county commissioners in favor of this rezoning, based on the existence of a mistake and the appropriateness of the zoning. I'll add that, I don't know that I need to, because I think you guys, you all know it, but, you know, one of the goals of zoning is, overall goals, is to allow and encourage the productive, economically fruitful, and appropriate use of land in, especially in an infill area like this. This will fulfill that goal, because frankly, otherwise, that rear piece is virtually unusable. I mean, I say virtually, I mean, somebody might buy a house back there, I don't know. And then, but then the question is, would the commercial, would the commercial owner in the front, assuming it's different, would they, how would that driveway work? Coming off, and coming off Liberty Road with a resident, but anyway, we think it's a pretty... Coming off, and coming off Liberty Road with a resident, but anyway, we think it's a pretty compelling argument, and we appreciate your consideration of it.
All right, Mr. Schaefer, thank you. Mr. Almond, would you mind summarizing the legal standard for us, just what we have to hold up, hold this up against, in terms of what constitutes? I mean, it's usually change or mistake, but here it's not change, it's only a mistake, right?
Right, correct. So just to give you sort of a comprehensive overview, as you are all aware, the way to sort of rezone that the Maryland Land Use Article provides the counties is you can do comprehensive zoning, comprehensive rezoning, and then, in the meantime, you have, the Land Use Article provides this, and case law backs this up, this sort of change and mistake avenue to do rezoning. Now, the change portion of the change slash mistake is if there's been such a substantial change to the neighborhood that the areas surrounding the zoning where they want to be changed, it just makes sense, because, for instance, it would be like, it would be like in the movie Up, the guy's like the little house, and all of a sudden he's surrounded by giant skyscrapers. That would be a good sort of change argument to make. Now with mistake, as Mr. Schaefer was saying, and I'll just piggyback on what he was saying is, mistake is not so much the air concerned with the logical validity or merit of the ultimate conclusion drawing, as with the adequacy and the accuracy of the factual premises that underlie the conclusion drawing. So basically, what information did the zoning body have when they made their decision? And if they had incomplete information, or just wrong information, that can constitute a mistake. And as Mr. Schaefer said, it doesn't need to be a mistake in fact. As long as there's something that they missed or didn't consider, the courts and the statute consider that to be a mistake. So in this case, you have that parcel on the tax map that, you know, didn't exist, but was shown. So that's their mistake argument, and so that's sort of what you have to look for, is is there, was there something in the underlying decision-making of the zoning body at the time they made that zoning decision to find that there was a mistake in the underlying presumption of their decision?
And if we do find that there's a factual mistake, something is inaccurate, are we then, under the statute, compelled to grant the zoning change?
No.
Or are we then are empowered to exercise discretion?
You're empowered to exercise discretion. You may, there may be a mistake in fact, but there's, that's not a mandatory, automatic, "Okay, there's a mistake in fact, we need to change it." That's, the planning commission still has the discretion on that front.
And I appreciate the summary from both of you. You know, we face these change or mistake cases from time to time. We don't get a lot of them, and I think it's useful to be reminded of the standard, because if we don't find the standard's been met, we don't have the discretion to do what we're being asked to do. Mr. Schaefer?
Mr. Almond's summary is totally accurate, and I agree with it. I would like to add one thing to it. The case law does suggest that there are, there can be a situation where your discretion, which he properly refers to, after you find the mistake, now you look at whether the zoning makes sense, is really what it is. And at that point, you're looking at the health, safety, welfare, and, you know, does that zoning make sense? You've shown mistake, or you've shown change, now we move to the next stage. But the court, the cases have said, and I don't know that I'm even, that we have it here, but I alluded to it earlier, that you don't have discretion if failing to rezone would deprive a property owner of all reasonable use. Now, that's a high standard, but the courts have said that. Thank you.
Sure. So I have just a couple of questions, and then obviously I'll turn it over to everybody else. The, just for clarification, where this strip of land was shown on the tax map, is there any easement or any other right-of-way that's reflected in the land records that backs up that strip of land that's shown on the tax map?
We have not done a full title search, but we do not believe there is. And, well, let's put it this way. We have looked at the deeds whereby that strip was consolidated into the lots, there's none in there, and that's where it would sort of have to be, I think, in order for those people. Because if it existed, whoever developed that R twenty land as residential would have to go to those lot owners and say, "Hey, by the way, I'm putting a little road through the back of your property that you thought you acquired as an add-on piece." So we don't think, I can't say for sure, but no, I don't think there's any easement through there.
Okay. And then, the other question I have is, even with this mistake, which, to my mind, I'm only one voice, but is pretty obvious, it's a factual mistake, how does that augur in favor of C-two as opposed to R twenty thousand? I mean, why doesn't it just equally fall into, it ought to stay R twenty thousand, there's a lot of R twenty thousand around it?
Because the only logical reason for the R twenty is that it had back access, not through Liberty Road, through an existing commercial gas station. So the planners that considered that, I think it's a logical inference to say, they said R twenty works for here because of the, you said, it's a bunch of R twenty around there. Well, not if it doesn't have that back access through residential land. So, you know, frankly, it's a little bit of a quirk, I think it's a quirk, it might be a good quirk, in your zoning ordinance, because it's somewhat unusual for a zoning ordinance to permit even a residential driveway to come through a commercial, commercials piece. But your ordinance says accessory structures can be on it, and it may be legal to put a driveway up there, but being legal does not mean it makes sense. And as, I think that was what Hannah was referring to in the second paragraph, or the last sentence of the second paragraph of their recommendation, where they said, "Because of its limited access, the development would contradict planning principles," meaning that, meaning that nobody would have intentionally zoned that R twenty thinking that it was going to have to access off of Liberty Road through a commercial site.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have right now. Anyone have any other questions or comments?
So the strip, can we go back to the map?
Yep.
When we're talking about the strip, go back to that.
That one?
Yeah. The strip on the north side of the property, that long rectangle, that doesn't exist, that's what we're saying.
Correct.
We still show it on the drawing, so, because the tax map still has it.
Correct. It's been since updated, since we did the deed research, but at the time, it is shown. It was shown.
And there's no access, so the north, I'll call it the northeast portion of the property where that strip is shown, but doesn't exist. There's no capability of a flag, for lack of a better description, you have flag lots with shared driveway to get to the back of this property for residential purpose.
I would say no, because it doesn't exist. It's a part of the properties to the north, so you would be taking somebody's property, essentially, for access.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, in terms of the, it makes sense to me that, you know, if all these facts and circumstances are as they are, I would lean towards, you know, moving this towards commercial, too. Having said that, we do have those R twenty homes that are adjacent, and I think they've assumed that that would be, if it were developed, it would be residential, too. I would want to understand, even though it doesn't exist, I would want to understand the disposition of, and the, what do you call it, the title lineage of that, of that strip of land, because if at some point, Mr. Schaefer, it was a part of that piece of property that's labeled two twenty-four, I guess, if that's my eyesight.
Yes.
P-two twenty-four. If at one point in the past, if it was part of that, I do think that changes the facts and circumstances of this a little bit, because somebody disposed of that strip, you know, voluntarily, and basically made this property landlocked to some degree, and limited their access through that commercial property. They did so willingly, and I think that fact might change my opinion a bit. I don't mean to, I'm not the only one who sees it that way, that the disposition of that strip makes a bit of a difference?
Can I just clarify that whoever did that, and they did, somebody did do that?
Okay.
But it wasn't the owner of this property?
Well, but they purchased that property knowing that, then.
You mean the front property?
Yes, sir. Did they purchase this property knowing that they did not have back access?
I have no idea what they thought. It's been, whoever owns it now has, I think, owned it for a long time. I doubt if they did, but I don't know. I don't know.
And, Mr. Lester, if I may, the issue with mistake and what you have to look for under the legal standard is the underlying assumption of the zoning body that made the mistake. So it's not what this person may have done with that strip, it's what did the underlying, what did the zoning body do, and what underlying information did they have, did they miss, and what was their decision based off of? If that's the legal standard, is the zoning body's decision, not what a property owner may or may not have done, which obviously feeds into the zoning authority's decision, but it's what they knew and the underlying assumptions they had at the time when they made the decision.
Okay.
And I do have title work. I don't have full title.
Yes, sir.
That's a term of art in our business. That means you go back sixty years, and, you know, da-da-da-da-da. But we did look at those, these are the two deeds of the people that now, or the deed chains of the people that now own that strip. They're the lot owners that adjoin it. And it looks to me like it goes back, one goes back to eighty-one, and the other one goes back to seventy-one. So this mistake's been a long time coming.
I was getting to that. If that strip is property, somebody's paying the tax on it, it's recorded as tax. What we're saying is that line is drawn incorrectly.
Correct.
And weren't we the zoning body?
Yes, and the commissioners.
What's that?
The commissioners.
Ultimately, right. So we made recommendations, but we were looking at a tax map that showed this mistake.
Correct.
But for this mistake, Mr. Schaefer and his clients wouldn't be here, because he's basing his whole argument, as I understand it, on this mistake of this strip of land shown on the tax map that's in error.
And the fact that the line runs through the back of the building. Now, you know, that has to be a mistake. Now, that's not quite as strong an argument to me, because your answer might be, "Well, then let's move it back ten feet, or twenty feet. You know, let's fix that." I mean, obviously, you would fix that, or the county would fix that. You don't want a zoning line running through the middle of a commercial structure, but that's still a mistake argument.
Okay. All right. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this rezoning case number two-two-nine? All right, hearing none. Are there any other questions?
Yep.
My view is that I think the standard's been met. Excuse me. I just, I think as we have these, I try to make sure that everyone involved understands, and the public understands, that we don't make these change or mistake findings casually. You know, we put a lot of time into comprehensive rezoning, we put a lot of effort into that, a lot of county resources were consumed, we heard from a lot of people. And so when these come up, we like to make sure we vet them carefully. Having said all of that, my view is that you have met the standard, that there was a mistake, and that, under the circumstances of this particular piece of property, it seems to make sense that it all ought to be C-two. I'm just one person, but anyway, I'm just sharing my thoughts on that.
I totally agree, excuse me, and move that we recommend to the commissioners to make the change to C-two.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, do we need a, can we do a voice vote, or do we need a roll call?
What is your preference? I think maybe I'll do a roll call, if that's okay with you. Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Ms. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Please let the record reflect that fiber in favor, and the motion carries to forward this with a favorable recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your presentation. We'll move on to item ten, which is the Transportation Master Plan Discussion. Good morning.
Good morning.
The crazy mouse, okay.
I think it's pretty good today.
It is better today.
Yeah, Matt and a mouse chat.
I am here without Claire Stewart today to cover with you the last of the six subarea corridors that we've been talking about over the past several months for the Transportation Master Plan. This was sent to you earlier for your review, and in the interest of time, I'll go, I'll try to go fairly quickly through it. This particular corridor, Westminster, even though it has been identified as a pretty big area, the focus really was, by the consultant, only on the portion of Maryland one forty that is considered the biggest problem. So even though you'll see a large subarea, it's a very concentrated analysis. So just briefly, I'll go section by section. This format should look familiar to you by now, it's what we've used, or what they used, and we will continue to use for each of the six subareas. Just jumping forward a little bit, we will bring all six back to you in January with any answers to questions that you've had on them, and packaged more so you'll see how this chapter would look. Then the next thing we're going to do, because it has been brought up, and we agree these are very minor improvements and short-term improvements, our next chapter will be the Plan Major Streets, which are the long-term improvements, the ultimate improvement of the road network.
And just remind me, these are for areas outside of the municipalities that have their own planning and zoning commissions, or this includes?
No, some of this is inside of Westminster, the way Westminster's boundaries are, some of it is. And we have worked with, not really worked with them, but we have met with Westminster several times regarding this. As a matter of fact, our consultant had a third recommendation for operational improvements that their staff did disagree with, that we took out of this report that you haven't seen. It just was something that they didn't agree with. I spoke with their planning director last week, and he wants to take it to their planning commission and see if they have any additional comments. So when we come back to you in January or February, whichever it is, we can share those with you, and he said they may be sending you some correspondence. But again, part of the problem is, it has to be with the understanding that these are not considered ultimate improvements. These are considered short-term operational things that will help.
Thank you.
So just section by section regarding the road network. Obviously, you're all familiar with Westminster. It's at the heart of the county, the confluence of Maryland twenty-seven, thirty-one, thirty-two, ninety-seven, and Maryland one forty. These are all classified as arterials, leading to all areas of the county. Again, it provides access to Mount Airy, Manchester, Hampstead, New Windsor, Eldersburg, and Sykesville, and also Howard, Montgomery Counties, and Pennsylvania. Regarding land use and demographics, it's important to note that the Westminster subarea is expected to experience nearly half of all countywide growth over the next twenty years, with the growth forecasted at the confluence of the five major state roads that we just, that I just mentioned. Regarding commuter, and these are several recently completed projects in the area. Regarding commuter flows, and I think Claire probably mentioned this to you last time, we are working on making these maps more legible for the final product. I realize they're hard to read, but they are extremely informational, so we definitely want to keep them in the report. So about twenty-five percent of Westminster residents work in Westminster, and about twenty-six percent of Westminster workers are Westminster residents. Otherwise, residents work throughout the Baltimore and Washington regions, with fourteen percent working in other Carroll County subareas, and nineteen percent working in Baltimore County. There's a sizable inbound worker flow to Westminster from Pennsylvania and Baltimore County. Regarding local goals and policies, Westminster is by far the largest and busiest locale in Carroll County as the county seat, and owing to its location at the intersection of all those arterials. all those arterials. From the 1962 Master Plan of Road Improvements to the early 2000s, an arterial bypass envisioned to be an expressway of Westminster was the key transportation goal. Since 2001, the Master Plan of Roadways has not included this bypass. In its place are a series of recommendations developed for a corridor improvement project from Maryland 140, from Market Street to Sullivan Road, that would include multiple continuous flow intersections and a single-point urban interchange at Malcolm Drive and Maryland 140. However, these proposals have a combined estimated cost of $271 million and have not progressed any further in either concept or detailed design with the state. Another strategy that's been considered is to strengthen the local grid network to provide alternative means of access to residential, commercial, and industrial areas, and we'll be going over some of those. Those are the Plan Major Streets. And we'll go in, I think, in the next chapter into some of the detail of that. However, those also have a cost to them. So regarding existing traffic conditions, Maryland 140 between Market Street and Sullivan Road must serve all eastbound and westbound Maryland 140 traffic in this one congested corridor. From east to west, the intersections of Maryland 140 with Market Street, Malcolm Drive, Center Street, and Angler Road all operate at level of service D or worse during at least one peak hour. And obviously, it's obvious which peak hour it would be, depending if people are leaving the county or coming back. Travel speeds along 140 through Westminster are variable, but some segments experience typical AM peak speeds of 30 to 34 miles per hour and PM peak hours of 25 to 29 miles per hour. And slower speeds are typical through the historic downtown where travel on Main Street can drop below 15 miles per hour during the PM peak hour. 2040 traffic conditions with no improvements. With anticipated growth and no improvements, traffic congestion will continue to degrade in Westminster. By 2045, all the study intersections along Maryland 140 will operate at level of service E or worse during at least one peak hour. Regarding planning approaches, Maryland 140 through Westminster is not only the most congested corridor, but also the most active corridor. Therefore, an effective approach to mitigating congestion must consider not only how much it would reduce travel times and intersection delay for those traveling through the city, but how improvements could help motorists access local businesses. So that made this analysis a little tricky. It was explained to us by the consultant. The most conventional way to address a congested corridor is to add capacity. This was the approach taken in the mid-2000s planning studies with all the recommendations that totaled up to $271 million. These would lead to significant travel time savings, but at a very high cost. As an alternative to adding capacity along a roadway, you could reduce demand, but the off-site improvements needed to reduce corridor demand come with their own property and environmental impacts. In the case of Westminster, this approach has been thoroughly explored in the past with extensive study of the bypass. So that approach is also not considered feasible at this time. So an approach that better matches existing roadway space with local traffic demand can help roadways and intersections operate as efficiently as possible. It avoids the environmental and property impacts of major construction projects, but often reduce intersection delays. Therefore, the consultant, and what you see before you, is an analysis that tested a scenario using an alternative intersection design known as quadrant roadways that limited left turns off Maryland 140 at Malcolm Drive and Cranberry Road, Ralph Street. So the recommended approach that you see here, in contrast to major intersection and interchange improvements at this time, or a full bypass, these improvements promise to achieve moderately high benefit for very low cost. It recommends pursuing this quadrants approach. Although certain intersections will still operate below acceptable levels of service, it will help the through traffic through, on 140. And I guess if you want me to, I could go over these, but basically it's just limiting during different peak hours, the left turns and at Gorsuch Road, I believe at Gorsuch Road, not having the light anymore and having right in, right out. So basically, the goal is just to keep traffic flowing through 140. And these are what we've been calling our MPPIs, these two right here. Again, we met with Westminster. There was a third that they did not recommend and that we agreed with them. So instituting these left turn prohibitions and converting Gorsuch to right in, right out, and allocating the space reclaimed from left turn lanes to new through lanes would maintain today's congestion levels for the approaches and major side streets, and some of them actually would become worse, but it's still an improvement over doing nothing, which at this point in the state CTP is where we are. So this is what is recommended. They'd be low in cost, they'd require minimal construction to adjust the roadway median and reconfigure the turn lanes as through lanes, and they would not have any environmental impacts. I'm not going to go into the details on what the different levels of service would become, and as you can see, there's still problems. But again, being that so much of the growth is anticipated to occur in Westminster, the no build is worse than what you see here or the no improvement. I know that was kind of a overhead view. Did you have any specific questions?
So thank you for the over, sort of the high-level view, because we have had the opportunity to review this in more detail. So I guess where I end up is that the status quo is bad. Something has to be done. Nothing big is going to be done. So these are the small things that can be done. This is where you get the most juice for the least squeeze. Seems to be no reason not to do that. Like the other chapters we've looked at, there are variables that are sort of beyond our control, too. I mean, we've talked about before how every morning it looks like they evacuate Pennsylvania. Whether there are other opportunities within the state of Pennsylvania where folks decide that they would rather be employed in Southern Pennsylvania or Central Pennsylvania, and they stop commuting down here would obviously affect us, but we don't necessarily know that, and it's not something that can necessarily be taken into account.
It has not been predicted that that would happen.
No.
And I noticed the flows, I might have missed it, but I think, was there a data point that talked about folks that they don't commute to Westminster, but they just drive through it on their way to?
Yes.
From Pennsylvania through Westminster to other places?
Absolutely. And that's, I think, one of the important things to realize about this approach. It's just keeping it moving because they are, I think, I don't remember the exact percentages, but a lot of the traffic is just going to Baltimore County and beyond and using us. This is similar to what we saw with the Manchester-Hampstead corridor.
Right.
They're just using us as their through streets.
Right, right. And things that may happen north of us can affect that positively or negatively for us, but we don't necessarily.
And lately, it's been negatively. The residential developments that we see coming, and we are sent, but we can't really impact them. We can comment, we're aware of them, but we can't impact them because it's a different state. That's what we've been seeing. We haven't seen anything to the positive that's coming out of Pennsylvania for us.
So big projects, long-term projects, those remain sort of off the radar at the moment?
At the moment, and for the purposes of this chapter, but we will be talking about those in detail. And I mean, just, there's small progress being made. There's going to be a study of 97. That's the first step. 97 between Westminster and the improvements that were made by the airport. So those are really huge projects that we take baby steps on. So that's why, that's why when we worked with the consultant, this was our approach for this, is that we can always have this long-term plan, and it's great to have, but when we don't see anything really happening, it's good to have these in our back pocket or, you know, as considerations for how to make improvements.
And I, my last comment really is, down in Montgomery County, Silver Spring area and other things, I know they were wrestling with some of these things, and they would make some of these left turn lanes, through lanes for certain times of the day. It can be terrifying because you go through and all of a sudden the sign changes, and you thought you were in a left turn lane, and it's a through lane, and here comes some traffic. And I don't know that we want to, you know, imitate that sort of thing.
And I don't think that's what's being proposed here. I think they're talking about just permanently limiting the left turns and just opening up what's now the turn lane to more through traffic. But I agree with you. It's confusing.
It is, yeah. Any other comments or questions?
No. I think the changes are, for the most part, good. I'm a big proponent for getting off the main roads when it looks like it's crazy, so I probably use a lot of that already. So I think it's just a matter of getting used to different travel.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Just some background. The consultant, is the consultant the state or is it an independent consultant?
No, we had an independent consultant that we worked with, BMC, the Baltimore Metropolitan Council, was the project manager on that. And that was two years ago. We did that in 2020 with them. But the data is still what the data, there, I think some people see a two-year-old study and think a lot has changed. A lot hasn't changed.
Yeah, and that was my next question. The study, does it take into account, I mean, pandemic, no traffic, post-pandemic fact that kind of, if you want to call normal, sitting in traffic normal? Do they forecast less retail space being used, remote work, you know, government office space, you know, not fully occupied, which reduces traffic? Do they take that into account? How far out do they go?
So Mike, when this was done, it was, the data is pre-pandemic numbers because it was done in 2020. So much of the data behind this was pre-pandemic. What we're seeing for post-pandemic is kind of almost going back to normal, but maybe elongated peak hours, meaning, you know, where you had people traveling Monday through Friday, 6:00 to 8:00 a.m., and then, you know, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. tends to be now strung out a little longer because people aren't maybe commuting every day, or they have more flexibility in their schedule, and there tends to be now more afternoon traffic as people run errands because they have that convenience of working at home. We didn't, obviously, we were in the pandemic at the time, but we did not look to forecast because who knew what was going to happen, those changes of what would happen post-pandemic? But this is what we're finding out now. Again, kind of going back to that 140 scenario, that was in the state consolidated transportation plan, still is, zero funding. They spent over a million and a half dollars doing a design, I think almost to 30% on this stretch right outside Center Street here. And that at the time was 250 or 60 million for the improvements. Now would probably be closer to 500 million or more because they were going to do a grade separated interchange and eliminate the traffic lights. But that's a really big lift and a lot of money for, again, that cost-benefit of reduction.
And procedurally, we'll ultimately get this all put together, and then we make a recommendation to send it on to the commissioners for their approval. Is that the way this will?
Correct. But this is just one chapter. This is chapter five, then chapter six will be what Linda just discussed, the ultimate improvements, everything in the, we're including everything in the state's highway needs inventory, which are those major giant projects, as well as all of our planned major streets and planned neighborhood connections. So there's sort of a graduated look at all this, short-term to long-term, low cost to very, very high cost. But yes, you'll be seeing it all at once. I know it's kind of confusing that we keep bringing you different sections.
No, it's fine. It's better to have it in small bites and then you see the comprehensive.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a recess. Why don't we stand in recess for 10 minutes, and we'll come back at about 10 minutes after 10. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
... show how signs are to be located and designed and may approve, reject, or modify the sign plan to promote an attractive and pleasing appearance. Require a plan which shows the location, design, and effect of any outside lights to be used on the property and the effect of any inside lights to be used if their use would affect adjacent neighboring or contiguous properties. Require that a binding agreement and surety be provided to the county to ensure completion of the site development plan. Ensure consistency with the master plan and this chapter. Require a traffic impact study be performed by the owner in accordance with the criteria established by the Department of Public Works or its successor agency. Require certification of adequacy of public facilities by the agencies having jurisdiction over public facilities and the county. And that's essentially it. So, really, as I go through all of these, I just want you to keep in mind of what the planning commission can impose changes to, what they may see fit for the site itself, anything of that nature. So with that, I will start the first one on the agenda. So, David B. Craft, Bureau of Development Review. As mentioned, the first project on the agenda is for Lenz Stoller, second amended, file number S-19-0022. You've already got acquainted with who is here representing for the project. And what this project is proposing is a roughly 10,000 square foot addition to the existing building, expanding the parking area, and adding an automated detached car wash. This project is before the Planning and Zoning Commission as a concept plan, so there is no action required. However, with all site development plans, the planning commission may consider delegating approval of the final site plan to the planning commission chair. So for those who are not familiar where the Lenz Stoller is, this is the car dealership that has Dodge, Chrysler, and Jeep out on 140. The address for that is 1001 Baltimore Boulevard, and it is shown as being the site here. This is Maryland Route 140, which is Baltimore Boulevard. This is Old Westminster Pike behind it, and over here is where you'll see Malcolm Drive. So the property itself is roughly six and a quarter acres and currently consists of a car dealership. The property lies in the former Business General Zoning District and has established access onto Baltimore Boulevard. So because this project was presented prior to the code changes of December 23rd, 2019, we are still processing it as if it was still within that former Business General Zoning District. The adjoining properties to the north across Baltimore Boulevard are either Zone C2 or Commercial Medium and house a bank, which is this one here, or it is within the municipal limits of the city of Westminster and will house a future car dealership, which is this property over here. Properties to the south are currently Zone R20 and host residential dwellings. Properties to the west is zoned light industrial and host a rental business. And adjoining property to the east is either commercial heavy of C3 or R40,000. So this property is C3 and houses a medical office. This property below it is R40,000 and is used for residential purposes. All adjoining properties are located within the Westminster Priority Funding Area as well as the Westminster Growth Area. So as you can see, the existing 15,392 square foot dealership building is located on the kind of the top of the property here. Next to it, you can see the parking area for show cars, for customer parking, as well as the employee parking. Behind the property, there is a stormwater management facility shown here, as well as a wooded area shown over here. There is a freestanding sign which fronts onto Baltimore Boulevard to promote the business. There are no streams or FEMA 100-year floodplain designations on site. However, as you can see, there is a stream right on the opposite side of that property So, what we are here for is that the owner slash developer is proposing to construct a 10,575 square foot addition to the existing building. The addition is shown as being on the east, sorry, the west side of the existing building. Also proposed is a detached automated car wash, which will be behind the existing building, and then additional parking areas, which you can see, which this hatching pattern will be behind the existing parking area. The addition is proposed on the west side of the building, as stated, and will house nine additional lifts in the service area, a new service entrance, and expand on the showroom. And it should be noted that the car wash shown on the rear of the building here is not to be used by the public and will only be for the customers of the dealership. So the concept site plan was initially submitted August 7th, 2019, and was subject to citizen involvement at the September 23rd, 2019 Technical Review Committee meeting. There were no citizens in attendance at that meeting. However, after the meeting, an email was provided from the neighboring property, and that had concerns of offloading of their inventory on 140. So per Carroll County Code, and I'm just going to read this verbatim from the code here, is that "In all districts, uses that involve deliveries, shipments, or removal of goods, materials, supplies, or waste by truck shall provide adequate off-street loading and unloading facilities." Once this was raised to the developer, they have since shown this area here as being an offloading zone for their use. With that, that does meet the code requirement as outlined. Also noted in the code is the minimum number of spaces required for a vehicle sales lot. It is two for every 1,000 square feet of floor area excluding service bays, plus two for each service bay. Customer parking shall be identified on the site. So the property is proposing 286 parking spaces total, with 115 being code required. And this is broken down into four separate categories. You'll have customer parking, employee parking, service parking, and display parking. So of the 286 parking spaces on site, both existing and proposed, 171 are to be utilized for display purposes only. So it still falls within the requirements of our code. This plan is exempt from the code requirements of floodplain management. Forest conservation and soil conservation have granted approval of the concept plan. Landscape requirements will be addressed as part of the final site plan review. Approval was granted by the Bureau of Utilities and Carroll County Health Department. Bureau of Engineering Review and the State Highway Administration have granted approval of the plan with existing access onto Baltimore Boulevard. Site compliance has stated that the site plan complies with the requirements of Maryland Accessibility Code. The Bureau of Resource Management granted concept stormwater management approval. The site will utilize existing stormwater management facility on site, as well as new microbioretention facilities. So you can see, there is going to be a new facility here that will feed into this existing larger stormwater management facility. And finally, the site plan, the final site plan will be tested and reviewed for adequacy of public facilities in accordance with Chapter 155. So before we move on, I do want to show some of the elevation drawings of what's being proposed. So this is going to be the addition onto the existing building. So this is looking, if you're standing in the parking lot, looking at the side of the building. This is the existing building, and this is the proposed addition. If you're looking at the rear of the property, so you're standing behind the building, this is the existing building, this is the proposed addition, and then if you're standing on 140 looking at the site itself, this is the existing building, and this is the proposed addition. If we move on to the car wash, this is generally how it will look from all sides. And then finally, just some pictures of the site itself. So this is, these four pictures are where the proposed parking will be. I'm sorry, these three pictures here are where the proposed parking area will be. This picture down here on the bottom left is where the proposed car wash will be located, This is a picture of the existing stormwater management facility. These are some pictures of the existing building itself. So this is from the front. This one is from the rear, and this one also from the front. And finally, these are pictures of the existing access onto State Highway Road, Maryland Route 140. I don't believe there's any changes proposed to this entrance. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, as well as representatives from the project.
All right, David. Thank you. Mr. Leck?
We're just here to answer questions.
Well, good. We appreciate that. Well, I'll start with my questions. First of all, I think the building looks nice, and the biggest concern I have is the one that the neighbor raised, which is Dr. Freji. It looks like to me that the area that's now designated, that David just showed us, for off-street parking is really unchanged. But if I'm wrong, obviously, correct me. Is there anything that's changing about where the, you're designating the off-street unloading?
No. They're, we just are going to designate that area, and they're going to have to start using that area, utilizing that area.
So, I appreciate that. My concern is that that area's always been available, and yet it's always not been used, at least according to the neighbor. Do you have any information to suggest they have been using it and that what the neighbor's saying is not accurate, or it's accurate but only partly accurate? What's your view on that?
I haven't looked into it.
Okay. He says he hadn't looked into it, but we're, obviously, we're proposing this to solve that problem. So, I mean, we can talk, I'm not sure whether they've been, whether the Lenz Stoller people have been using it recently or not. We can check into that and get back. But certainly, what we're proposing is that's what we're going to be doing to solve that off-loading problem.
Yeah. No, and I tell you, I get that. Looking at the property, though, how easily accessible is it for, I mean, these are tractor-trailers, I assume, that are coming in carrying these cars. You know, looking at the overhead picture that we have, it doesn't look like it's the easiest place to get to. They've got to come in off the highway, and then they've got, they turn off the highway, they've got to turn one, they've got to turn twice to get to where this unloading is. Is that, is that feasible, really, for a tractor-trailer to do that? Is there enough space for them to do that?
We can definitely, there are some changes that are going to be made down on that, I guess, that, that end of the site with the dumpster location and stuff. We may have to look at locations for the load. It may change, but regardless, we're going to provide a loading/unloading that will work by the time it's completed. Again, this was just concept. Conceptually, we believe that that would work. Once we get into this final design, we will make sure that it will work.
Yeah, the, look, from our standpoint, it's a safety issue. Having, having a truck parked down on the highway, I understand why the driver would want to do that. It's convenient, and, but the concerns that Dr. Freji raises, I very much agree with. It does, it interferes with sightlines, it, you have traffic suddenly having to stop on the highway and make these turns in when the truck is there. It takes a while to unload, so these, these safety concerns exist for quite a while. And the unloading area that you've designated, like I say, I'm concerned because that's always been available, and yet it seems to have not been used. And it looks like you may have to change some of the parking that's around the building to make space for the tractor-trailer to come in and make those, make those turns. So, you know, you may have some cascading issues that happen, not that you can't deal with it, but certainly for us to sign off on a final site plan, at least for me to sign off on the site, a final site plan, I'd want to make sure all of those things have been dealt with in a practical way. You know, it's one thing for us to sit here and draw pictures, but in the real world, when a guy's coming in or gal to bring a tractor-trailer in and deliver cars, it's got to be something that they can do and that works for them and can be done safely and maneuvering through the facility. I also don't know, once they drop off the car, how do they get turned around to get back out of there? I'm not, you know...
They would have to loop, yeah, they're going to have to loop around the building.
Yeah, but we're going to be adding to this side of it.
Yeah, well, this will be changing too.
Okay. So anyway, I just want to see how, how they're going to move through. You've got the car wash back there, and how they're, and if it's difficult, it's less likely to be used in the real world, has been my experience.
I would say, I'm sure there are subcontractors that are driving the trucks to deliver the cars, and that's part of the problem, but I guess, well, you know. But I do agree that the access is kind of limited, because, you know, if they come in the middle of the day and there's customers there, and cars parked everywhere, just need to make sure you have enough room to be able to traverse around the building to unload. And, you know, it's going to, should really fall back on the dealership to make sure that, you know, they don't offload out on the road. I've seen it at the other dealerships, they're going through town before the same thing happening, so, but...
Yeah. Well, this is our opportunity to affect that in a, from a safety standpoint, in a positive way. So, I hope you're hearing our message, that we take it seriously, and I hear from you, you do too. So for the final site plan, this is just, just so you know, this is something I'll be, I'll be looking at. I think many of us will be looking at very carefully, has this been addressed in a realistic way.
I, I think that we want to see it back.
Yep. And I guess the other question I would have is, the existing stormwater pond is going to be able to handle the additional flow? It's not getting expanded, besides the micro retention area up above?
So ultimately, the existing facility in the rear had already been expanded, so part of the history and the report, I didn't feel the need to read it. But across the road for that future facility, a lot of that is going to be feeding into this facility on this site, and so they had to expand it for that purposes. And before anything gets final approval from stormwater management, that's going to be one of the items to look at, to make sure that they're not overrunning this newly expanded facility.
Okay.
The expansion hasn't been completed. As far as his picture, that's, the expansion is shown on that, on that, that's proposed grading.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Do you have any questions for us, in light of our comments? Because we, we want to make the process go forward as easily as possible, just so there's no confusion.
I don't think so. We understand that we need to handle the loading, off-street loading in an appropriate way that works, and we'll, we'll do that if we have to lose a few parking spots, and we'll cut our display from 171 to 165, or whatever we have to do. We can make it work.
Well, I think the other option too is, you know, entrance into the lot off of 140. The photos wasn't clear how wide that was for a tractor-trailer to be able to get in and out of there. That might be an option for you as well.
All right. And if the commission's okay, I'd rather have this come back.
Please, I would like to, yeah.
Absolutely.
Very good. Gentlemen, thank you. Look forward to seeing you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any members of the public, before you leave, I forgot to ask, are there any members of the public that wanted to comment on this project? The Lenz Stoller project? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 13. This is concept site plan, case number S-20-0030. This is EOTC Bachman Valley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Charles O. Fisher, Jr. of Walsh &amp; Fisher in Westminster, and I am here on behalf of the applicant. I am the only person here on behalf of the applicant. I learned this morning that the engineers who have worked on this are tied up and unable to get here today, and I have limited specific knowledge about the project, but I'm here to listen to your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. I understand you're not an engineer, so we'll be sure to...
I'm not an engineer.
Take notes about any engineering questions we have. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. So David B. Craft, again, Bureau of Development Review. As mentioned, next on the agenda is S-20-0030, which is the Ethiopian Orthodox Tewahito Church, which we have dubbed EOTC, and that is on Bachman Valley. And what this is proposing is the expansion of the current religious establishment while also bringing the site into compliance. Again, this is before the Planning and Zoning Commission. As a concept plan, there is no action required. However, with all site plans, the planning commission may consider delegating approval to the chair. So for those who are unfamiliar, this property is lot, it's at 2239 Bachman Valley Road, which is on the outskirts of Manchester, Maryland. So the property itself is outlined here. This down here is the extent of Manchester, the municipal limits. This is Hannover Pike, which is Maryland Route 30. This is Bachman Valley Road, which is Maryland Route 496. Yes, 496. And so what this property consists of is roughly 25 and a half acres, and as mentioned, it has an established, or it has a religious establishment currently residing on it. The property is currently fixed with three buildings. There is an Archive and Prayer slash Holy Water Immersion Building, and Assembly Hall, and a residence that is used by and for the priest before and after church service. The site has established access onto Maryland 496 through this property here. You can see the driveway here. There are two other users of that driveway shown here. I believe they are both with the church as well. There is an access easement in place for the portion of the drive that leaves the subject property and crosses neighboring properties. There is a stream that crosses the western portion of the property, as you can see here, and that has a wooded riparian zone. And there is also a pond on the property, as you can, there it goes, as you can see here. There are no FEMA 100-year floodplain designations on site. All adjoining properties are zoned agricultural and either host farmland or private residences. It should be noted that the northwest property, which is this one here, these two properties over here, and this property down here, are all encompassed by a mouth agricultural preservation easement. All properties in this area are served by private well and septic systems. So a concept plan was submitted to the county on January 1st, 2021, after it was determined the site was in violation of operating without an approved site plan. The plan identifies the construction of new buildings, as well as improvements to existing buildings. So the new buildings construct of a 10,000 square foot church, which is this building here, as well as an estimated 6,600 square foot holy water immersion building, which is this building here. Expansion is proposed for the existing Assembly Hall, which is this building here, and an existing Archive and Prayer Building, which is this building down here. This building here is the residence or the priest house, and there is no proposed changes to that. So religious establishments are a principal permitted use within the agricultural zoning district, and there are bulk requirements for religious establishments within that zoning district, and those are as follows. The property has to be at least two acres in size. The lot has to be at least 200 feet wide. The front yard setback has to be 100 feet. The side yard setbacks has to be 50 feet, and the rear yard setback has to be 50 feet. Taking all of that into consideration, zoning has granted approval of the plan as presented, and has noted that the above bulk requirements are being met. Access to the site is via existing access to Bachman Valley Road, so as you can see here. To ensure compliance with code, the existing drive will be enlarged to be 22 feet wide and paved. As the improvements and associated stormwater management to this drive are exceeding the existing access easement, a new access easement will be required. If we go to the next slide here, so a freestanding sign is also proposed at the entrance of the site from Bachman Valley Road, and that will lie within the new access easement. The detail of this sign is shown on Sheet 15 within the plan set, but also on the screen here, and has a measurement of a four-foot by 20-foot board that is going to be on two stilts, and it shows the overall height of the sign being a 30-foot maximum. Based on the projected trip generations, a traffic study is required. However, as access to this is to State Highway Administration or SHA's roadway, they are not requiring a traffic impact study. With that, Carroll County Department of Public Works waived that requirement as it is only affecting state roadways. The developer is required to provide access improvements as outlined within the State Highway Administration Access Manual, but other than that, State Highway has granted concept approval. So I'm going to go back to the, okay, perfect. So Carroll County Code states that the parking requirements for religious establishments are one for every four persons based on the maximum capacity of the sanctuary. The parking tabulation identifies the maximum capacity of the use on the property as being 500 persons, and thus would require 125 parking spaces. There are 126 spaces shown on the plan. Of the 126 parking spaces, 10 of which are to be reserved for handicap parking. There are concrete pathways that are going to be added that are either five feet wide to seven feet wide, and are going to connect the proposed parking areas to the new or improved buildings. Site compliance has granted concept approval of the plan and is requiring additional details for review of the final plan. Along with the normal service, which is shown as, as being open from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., the church also organizes two to three special events annually, which can yield thousands of participants. Those vary per each event, but based on the most recent one, which I believe was in October, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office was hired to help mitigate traffic in and out of the site. So the development is to be served by public, or I'm sorry, private well and septic systems. So there is an existing well that is shown as being here next to the Assembly Hall, and there will be additional septic reserve systems being put in on, right next to the existing trenches here. So this is the existing septic field. The well and septic plan can be found on Sheet 30 within the plan set. This site is located within the no-plan water service area and the no-plan sewer service area, per the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan. The Carroll County Health Department will require additional details for the review of the final plan. So the building materials and colors vary between the buildings. The proposed materials comprise of metal, exterior insulation finishing systems, or EIFS, and siding. The colors range from brown, white, or beige, and gold. Architectural elevations are provided on Sheets 33 through 43 within the plan set. There is a five-foot-high retaining wall proposed near the multipurpose hall, so it will kind of wrap on the building, so it'll run this way, and then along the building this way. And there's also a dumpster enclosure that is proposed here. So details, including height, materials, and colors of the retaining wall and the dumpster enclosure, will be provided on the final plan set. Forest conservation for the site is to be addressed by an easement over the wooded areas surrounding the stream, along with areas of afforestation. So you can see, there is an easement going to be right here, as well as over here. A variance was granted to allow for the removal of specimen trees. Landscaping is proposed throughout the proposed parking area. Water resources will require an easement surrounding the stream crossing the western portion of the property, with additional details to be provided during the review of the final plan. So this line shows the extent of that easement, and you can see there is a break between the two easements here, so that the property owners can navigate to the back of their property over an existing bridge that crosses the stream here. Floodplain management has granted concept approval of the plan with an easement being required. Stormwater management will be provided through the construction of multiple bioretention facilities throughout the site, and they have granted concept stormwater management approval. The concept site plan was subject to citizen involvement at the February 2022, I'm sorry, February 22nd, 2021 Technical Review Committee meeting. It should be noted that that was a virtual meeting. During then, no citizens were present. Again, that may have been due to the virtual nature of that. After the meeting, an email was received from an adjoining property owner, which outlined concerns for safety. which outlined concerns for safety, along with questions relating to the proposed development. A phone call was also received after the meeting from another adjoining property owner who did not pose opposition but had concerns about traffic on site. On October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, the Design and Architectural Review Committee, which is an advisory group, uh, met to review the project, and they had two comments as it relates to the project. One was that it has an ornate architecture and appears to be upgrading the looks of the existing building, and the second relates to the size of the roadside sign. So originally, the size of the sign was six-foot by thirty-two-foot on two stilts with a maximum height of thirty feet. After this comment from the D A R C, they have shrunk that to be what it is now, which was four-foot...
Twenty.
By twenty, thank you. Um, still on stilts and still with a maximum height of thirty feet. And finally, the final site plan will be tested and reviewed for adequacy of public facilities in accordance with Carroll County Code. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have. Um, to kind of give a better idea as to how the site looks, I'm just gonna run through some pictures of the site here. So this is the entrance or the exit onto Maryland four-ninety-six. So this is looking back at the roadway. This picture and this picture are looking both ways on the road. And this is standing across the street looking at the site entrance. This is on the site itself, so this is the gravel parking area that currently exists on site. This is part of the access drive. And these two bottom pictures show where the new parking area is to be located. These are some pictures of the existing buildings. So this is the existing assembly hall. This is the priest house. Um, and these two pictures are where, roughly where that new church is going to be located. This is the existing archive and prayer slash holy water immersion building. Uh, this is another view, both of these, of the other side of where the existing parking, or I'm sorry, the proposed parking is to be located. And this is standing on the existing parking area, looking to the rear of the site, where those adjoining residential buildings are located. Okay, and so again, uh, if there's any questions, I, or Mr. Fisher here, will be happy to answer them.
Thank you, David. Mr. Fisher, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I can tell you that of the properties that surround it, can you put up the um slide that has the various uh lots?
It's on here?
Yeah. That uh, that'll work. If I could approach this.
Certainly.
Please.
The site that, that we're talking about is called site on here and is outlined. And there is a notch in it that has two lots. Uh, both of them are controlled by the church. And this, uh, the property over which the easement runs, which contains, I think, about fifty-nine acres, uh, is also owned by the church.
Okay.
So they actually own all the property out of Bachman Valley.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Fisher?
None.
Not at this time.
Okay. I am, I have just a few questions and then you go. And you may not know the answer if not...
Me too.
Um, does the, what's referred to as the priest's house, does, does someone actually reside in that house full-time? Or is that just used intermittently?
I do not know the answer to that, to the full-time aspect of that question. I do know that uh, there is a priest who is, seems to be on the property whenever I have been there, which is only a handful of times. But, and I note that on the tax records, uh, his address is listed as the address of this property. But I don't know whether he's there full-time.
Okay. And by the way, I also wanted to clarify, we do this sometimes as we deal with religious institutions. Our purview here has nothing to do with theology or religion, it's land use. Uh, and so as we're asking these questions, I just want to be clear that that's what we're focused on, is the use of the property and the land, and how it um affects or doesn't affect adjoining and other landowners. The one thing that bothers me a little bit is that, part of the presentation was that apparently this was being used in this fashion for some period of time without any sort of site plan, without any plan approval. Do we have a sense of how long that was going on before they submitted this site plan?
Uh, I know they acquired the property in two thousand seventeen. And they came to see me after they had difficulty with the use of the property. And they came to see me in two thousand twenty. I don't know what exactly transpired before that. I can tell you that it is my impression that there was some ignorance of the appropriate processes to be followed uh on the part of the people who owned the property as of two thousand seventeen, um, whi- which I attempted to rectify uh over time.
Right, and hence we're here today, so you did. And David, I might have missed this in reading the report. Is there, is there a fire protection system that's required in this building?
So any new construction per current building codes requires a sprinkler system. Um, it, other than that, I am unaware of any special treatment that this would require.
Okay, so the new church building presumably would require a fire suppression system, tank, all the stuff that goes with it. Okay. The parking issue, um, so there's an, there are events a couple of times a year where it's described as thousands, plural, of people um descend on the site. Um, we have a hundred and twenty-five parking spots, I think. How, how do, how do they plan on dealing with thousands of people coming in when there are a hundred and twenty-five parking spots? Presumably they're, well, I won't presume. How do people get there? How are they gonna park?
If that question is addressed to me, I understand from talking to other people that those people come in in buses and are bussed onto the site, and they don't actually, most of them don't actually come in vehicles. Mr. B. Craft, you know anything about this?
I do not. Um, so one of the, the correspondence that I've received, which they may be here, uh, and I believe they sent it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, was a document that outlined a picture showing some of those buses. So that seems to be accurate.
And the plan doesn't call for bus parking, as best that I can tell. Is that, is that right?
That's correct. So all the parking they're showing is your typical parking spaces, twenty feet long. Um, so I don't think any of those would be special for buses.
Do we know where the buses parked in the prior instances?
I do not know the, the answer to that.
Because with this, um, with this use that's anticipated, well, not, it's not just anticipated, with the use that has occurred, um, it would seem that there ought to be a site plan that takes into account this use. And to me, that means that there ought to be adequate bus parking for the folks that they anticipate uh coming to the property. The other thing I don't understand, we've, we've received a number of um emails and comments from the public, and I'll give the public an opportunity to comment after we ask our questions. But this noise situation bothers me. I don't understand why they're making noise at five o'clock in the morning um and using P A system. I just don't understand the use and why this is happening. Do either of you have any understanding of, of um what that's all about and what this involves?
I do not.
I also have no idea.
Okay. Um, you know, David, as you outlined at the beginning under the statute, one of the things that we look at is, in our site plan review, is consistency with the, with the master plan. And part of that is, yes, churches are principal permitted use um in the agricultural zone, that's fine. Most of the time, and the idea behind it obviously, is that churches um tend to be not heavy users of traffic, they don't consume a lot in terms of resources, they tend to be pretty quiet. All of those things are pretty harmonious with the agricultural zone. So the, the numerous comments that we've received from the public about this really consistent loud noise that's happening um on the site, which in my view does interfere with the quiet enjoyment of adjacent landowners, is something I'd want to get more information about because I'm not sure. It seems to me if, if there's a need in their religious practices to have this, then we're gonna have a need to deal with it in some way. Um, and so I guess need a better understanding of what it is so we can figure out how best to address it from a land use standpoint.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd agree with that. I might only say that I don't believe that those complaints were made uh to representatives of the church. I'm not familiar with them, uh, and I, I don't really know the details, nor do I know the source from which the complaint came, how close it is to the property, or what the circumstances are. Certainly, it's something that can be addressed.
Well, and my guess is you, you might get a better underst, we all might get a better understanding as we hear some comments from...
I'm sure, I'm, I'm waiting to hear what the comments...
Right, and that would be, that would be constructive. The, um, so we'll get that in, in a little bit. And look, I would just say to everybody who's here in the commission, remind everybody, this is a constructive process. We all have property rights, um, and we all have neighbors, and we want to have good neighbors, and we want to be good neighbors. And so how we can do that is what we're discussing here today. And so we want to, we want to have everybody's property rights uh in mind as we look at this. Our job is to balance those things out. Um, we frequently have people come in and earnestly say to us, we wish you would focus more on property rights. And our response is, who's yours or your neighbor? Sometimes your neighbor wants to tell you what you can do with your property or what you can't. And uh, other times it's reversed. So um, just keep that in mind as we work through, we work through that today. We, we're gonna welcome your comments in a few minutes, but please um provide them to us in a way that helps us balance out those issues and understand um the circumstances. The um, lighting is another question that we typically deal with. I'm almost done, I promise, and then I'll turn it over to you guys. Do we have a sense of whether the lighting um is something that's on every night, all night long? Or, or um, these things are timed to go off at a certain point? Has that been developed yet, or is that still in process?
I do not have any information about that. My, my one comment would be with, that this property seems to be sort of in a bowl. And if you look at the, the pictures, the, the horizon is not very far away in any one of those pictures. And I have been to the property and I can, you can't see it from Bachman Valley Road. And it sort of sits down.
Okay.
But certainly that is, that is uh an aspect of it that, that is important that we get our, get our arms around.
Certainly. Um, and then the last thing I'll raise and then turn it over to um everybody else, let me just chuck off some of the things that um I had, is the sign. Anybody who watches us on TV, which is almost nobody, by the way.
Our ratings are bad.
Yeah, our ratings are pretty bad. You'll hear us talk about, hear us talk about signs a lot, and we're not fans of big signs. And uh, and that would apply here as well. So um, a sign particularly out in a predominantly agricultural area that is thirty feet high and twenty feet wide isn't gonna get my signature, I'm only one of seven, so, but uh, I would like to see something that's a little more um consistent with the community, lets people know how to find it, where the, where the turn is. But um, in my view, can probably be accomplished um with a, with a smaller sign. So with that, I'll turn it over.
I agree on the sign. I am like, on a good day, five feet tall. It says the sign would be um four by twenty. So if I look at these grids, um, I think they're probably like two feet and go across, that's fourteen or sixteen. So I would say from point to point, it's almost twenty. So that's kind of excessive, I think, especially knowing the area out there where it's going to be. But I also know the county has guidelines that they're gonna look at, but I would definitely prefer to see it smaller um rather than larger. And the, having done development, the specimen trees are always a question. Are they, and, and they've been waived. Are they in an area where um they would be building? Is that why those specimen trees are being, not being addressed or kept?
Do you know the answer to that, Dave?
So typically, um, whenever a specimen tree is to be removed on a site, it has to get waived, or you have to get a variance through the Bureau of Resource Management, which is then signed off by the director. A lot of times, when these trees come in to be removed, either they cannot be saved through this development, or they're already in a poor condition. To, to fully answer your question, let me see which one of those was the case, um, and then I will report back.
Okay.
I, I recall in, in the packet here, uh, there was actually a list of the trees, and some were not deemed to be saved because of root rot and things like that. So just, that might help, you know, but some looked okay according to the, the grading that was, that was done.
Yeah, and I think um, for me, the noise, especially, and, and I'm looking interesting to hear from the owners, but um, starting at five AM, I assume there's a noise ordinance somewhere throughout the county that does address...
That, that's correct. The uh county has a noise ordinance, and basically the standard for that noise ordinance is something that is unreasonable. Um, the county used to have this process where there would be different decibels for different times of the day, and you needed calibrated meters, but there were just a little too many moving parts to adequately enforce that um, that noise ordinance. So the county changed it to this sort of, if there's unreasonable noise, the sheriff's office will go out and investigate and determine whether or not to issue a citation if the noise is actually unreasonable. So it could be any time of day, any decibel, doesn't matter if it's at five AM or five PM.
Okay. I think a lot of what Jeff said, um, and I'm sure other comments will hear that we would definitely want to see it again before we do any approvals.
Any other questions?
No, the questions I have uh really come from some of the comments that the public made on the traffic, definitely. I know it's a state road, is there any guidelines that we can enforce? Because it seems like they almost needed a deceleration lane, and maybe a turn lane with some of the comments, because it looks like uh coming from the east, you know, the, the site distance isn't large, and if someone misses a turn and is backing up, and, you know, obviously with a sign, it's gonna be easier, but, you know, people do go rather fast through that stretch of road there, I do know that. Is there any guidelines that we can enforce, any kind of different turn lanes or deceleration lanes or anything? Or state road, we can't do anything?
Not, not on a state road. Unfortunately, that would be up to um S H A to make those improvements.
And I do know with noise, I mean, like, you know, Lehigh and their quarry, they have requirements that the county gave them for when they can operate and the kind of noise level. Obviously, with the complaints they've had, I would really think going forward that we, I, I would think we could enforce something. You know, I also sit on other boards that we have issues with noise. And, you know, the, the homeowner association that was complaining, you know, basically made the county buy a decibel reader so they can enforce it some, you know. I sit on the state fair board, and they've had a problem down there with, you know, late-night festivities going on and neighbor complaints. So the technology is available. You know, I think we probably need, with the comments that I've read and heard from people, that uh we definitely need to try to do something about the events. I mean, you know... I mean, you know, definitely sounded very excessive and very early in the morning, so...
Sure, and Mr. Huff, just to, it's my understanding that the Lehigh property, that was a conditional use approval, so as part of that conditional use, the BZA put on that noise requirement. We're here under a principal permitted, so unfortunately, you don't have that sort of authority, that stick, so to speak. However, just the noise ordinance does exist, so if the neighbors feel at any time there is an unreasonable noise, they call the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office will investigate and issue citations if they feel that the noise is unreasonable and interfering with the quiet enjoyment of the surrounding community.
Yeah, I think that by the comments, that happened multiple times. The other thing I guess I would ask is the building height. I mean, I know it kind of sits in a bowl, but to me, it looks like to the west and to the south, you can probably see in from adjacent properties, obviously. You know, the building seems excessively high, I think it's an average roof height, though, is what you go by, so I don't know how that comes up. Because it looks like the roof is probably almost, what, 60, 60 feet, the top of the dome, anyway.
Yeah, so that's one of the items that the Office of Zoning is reviewing for, is building heights. And let me see if I can find it in a section of code here. But that is one thing that I noted on the architectural plans, that it's not quite clear, because there's such a grade change, that one side of the building may be one height, while the other may be another from grade. So, for the agricultural zoning district, and I'm just going to read it right from the code, except as provided in Chapter 158.130E, no building or structure or part thereof shall be constructed or extended to exceed two and a half stories or a height of 35 feet. So, again, it sounds like this is going to come back before the commission for the final plan. We'll make sure that it's clearly annotated on the plans what that height is, and if necessary, they can work with the Office of Zoning or the zoning administrator to get a variance if they're exceeding that height restriction. And since I already have the microphone, I'm just going to go ahead and further give more information about the specimen tree question. So it looks like there are four specimen trees, generally in this area here, that are all clumped together. They are annotated as being specimen trees one, two, three, and four, and this is on Sheet 25. But those four are to be removed because the site development will impact the critical root zone for those. So it's noted as them being in fair condition, but I think that's why there's four trees being removed, because they're all clumped together within that.
Thank you. Mr. Huff, did you have any other questions?
I don't have any other question. Will this come back for us to review again before final, with obviously probably many, many, many comments?
Yeah. Let David answer a question first. Go ahead.
So generally, it would not. Generally, this comes before as a concept plan, and it comes before as a final plan. However, due to the nature of your guys' comments, if you so choose, we can certainly bring it back as a special report to see how those comments were addressed before coming back as a final site development plan for your approval.
The, I think that might be a good idea for a couple of reasons. One is we have a lot of questions, and secondly, you know, the engineers aren't here today, and despite Mr. Fisher's best efforts, you know, he can't drag people in here. And I think our rules actually require them to be here. And so, while we appreciate you being here, Mr. Fisher, in fairness to us wanting to get some technical answers to these questions, we're not able to do that. And I think probably it makes sense to have maybe a special report take place when they're here, and they can, hopefully, they will have addressed many of these things, and then they can explain some of these things from a technical standpoint back to us, so...
One of the other things...
I believe that's a reasonable position for you to take.
And one of the other things I would like to see is like, where is the parking going to be for events? Because obviously, with the huge septic area they're going to put in there, you know, don't want to park cars on top of the septic area, so...
Or buses.
Or pick special buses, yeah, so, yeah.
Janice, you had some comments or comments?
So, the, I realize that it's a bowl, but the adjoining properties around there that aren't all owned by the church may sit up higher and look down, so they probably do have views of this, so I think the architectural designs are going to be critical, simply because of what people have to look at. As a Realtor by profession, I am cognizant of property rights, whether it's the owners of the property or surrounding properties, so we do want to be fair to everybody. And when we're talking about the parking, I do think that we should probably make sure that if there are buses that bus people, there is adequate parking for them on paved surfaces. I'm done.
And to follow up on the bus, just to make sure there's adequate in and out for buses into the roads there, because they are pretty narrow. You guys checked off everything that I had written down when I was reading the service. That's great. I would just say, Mr. Schaefer, I think you're hearing a lot of irrelevant comments, and...
You mean Mr. Fisher?
I'm sorry, Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Schaefer is, too.
Clark's always listening. You're not on this one. And then, it's, you know, it sounds like the engineers and the owners need to become very familiar with the zoning laws. It's fascinating reading, I can tell you.
I've been doing it for a long time.
So, you know, we look forward to having you come back with the engineers and seeing what changes you've made.
Well, I can assure you that all the comments that I'm hearing today, as within 20 minutes after I leave here, I'm going to be reporting on them, so...
Thank you. All right. Chairman, do you have anything that hasn't already been discussed?
I think you've covered it.
I agree with the buses and all of that, you guys are comprehensive.
All right, well then, let's open it up to public comment, and let me just say a couple of things before we start. Number one, as I said, we want to receive the information from you. We've read everything you've submitted. If someone makes a comment that you were going to make, you don't need to make the same comment. We don't keep a tally of how many people say the same thing and give that extra weight. So if somebody says it, you don't need to say it. Some people don't like to speak in public, and we certainly understand that anyway. I hope you understand that we've paid attention to the comments that have come in from the public. We've tried to address some of those issues here, some we can't because we don't have the engineers, and they'll have to be dealt with at a later time. And lastly, just please be civil and respectful to the other members of the public here, some of whom may not agree with you, and actually, it helps the public discourse if we can hear all sides of an issue. So if somebody wants to stand up and say the light's green, and somebody else wants to stand up and say the light's red, we want to welcome both sides of that. I may, if you're going on too long, I reserve the right to cut you off, just because I want to make sure everybody who wants to say something has a fair opportunity to speak. Okay, so we've got three minutes. You know, in the world, I'm a lawyer by training, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Schaefer, others that are here, we're used to having time limits when we make arguments. Mr. Almond knows that well. So we mean no disrespect, it really is just a matter of fairness. We've had situations in the past where folks will come up and they'll dominate the microphone for about 20 minutes, and then it makes it so other people don't have an opportunity. So it's really meant to be fair. So I will reserve the right to cut you off when the three minutes is up. You don't have to use all three minutes. We will be listening to what you say. What you say matters to us. So with that, there's no numbering system, but when you do come up, walk up to the microphone, please state your name and your address, and then please provide us with your comments. So whoever would like to go first, please feel free to come up and offer the comments.
Mr. Chairman, you're talking about safety on the highways and all?
I just need your name and address first.
Speaker, White Oak Court, 3820.
Thank you.
And you preach the safety and all that, the Bachman Valley Road is going crazy since this church has moved in up there. People don't know how to drive, they're going 25, 30 mile an hour, 35 mile an hour on Bachman Valley Road, and turning into everybody's driveway. They don't care, and then when they get into the driveway, they know they've made the mistake, and put the rate in reverse. A lot of accidents have happened in Bachman Valley Road because of these people now. And as far as the buses, they had buses there, and they blocked the roads trying to get into a little opening, and they get lost in the neighborhood. These people don't have GPS on these buses, I guess. They go through all their neighborhoods because they don't even know where this damn compound is, excuse my language. But that's all I got to say, I'll do it in two and a half minutes, but I appreciate you all listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. That may be a record.
If you're going to give me here too many hours...
Doesn't actually work that way. You don't get a credit.
My name is Charles from Ushaw, I live three quarters of a mile away up on the hill to that lady's point of view. I have been interrupted in my house with the windows open for years with noise. I have had officers come into my driveway in their cruiser past my house with their windows open and hear it. This is all way before 7:00 o'clock in the morning. Theologically, I know we're not supposed to talk about it, but I wouldn't want to listen to Jimmy Jesse gospel bluegrass for four hours. The canting is, oh, it's despicable. But nonetheless, to my whatever timeframe, zoning's approved for that, this is a site concept, I understand. I'm not quite sure whether you're empowered to implement discretion, but my request is that this board and anybody else look really long and hard. I believe they would be negligent, and I know that's a strong word, if they don't look into the organization itself. I've done research, I've interviewed Ethiopian people who have been with the church who are scared to death. There's bad actors in this program. This is much larger than this site plan. Now, I know that's what we got to talk about, I want to get that on record, okay? Much larger. Go down to Arlington, go down to Washington, D.C., go up to Philadelphia, do your homework on where the funding is coming from, the actual use, like things like a health services that is in that site plan. Please examine their definition of health services. There are a lot of other, I'm trying to go as fast as I can. I believe, and I apologize that I'm nervous, I got short time and I'm upset. Public address systems, all those questions are in there. I submitted them, please pay attention to them, but I will tell you this in closing, I believe, based on the historical violations, which there have been multiple, the negative impact on our community, I know people who have moved and have sold and are contemplating moving and selling. I looked at the master plan when I bought eight years ago, and Brooks Leahy and I spent a lot of money getting my conditional zoning done for my business, and I'm at risk hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I've got to sit on my porch, well, I can no longer sit on my porch on the weekends like my wife and I did on our glider. The airplanes don't come across, you can look at the flight plans. The master plan said no commercial, and I believe this entity is a commercial entity that is accessing or utilizing religious benefits. Now, that's my opinion, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. The lack of enforcement, gee whiz, guys, it's 7:00, officers are here, you can go back to Commissioner Wentz's town hall meeting, where they were deceitful in saying they were only going to be a small church, they were only going to build one rotunda. How in six months can the renderings that are now on their website, and by the way, they've taken a lot off, look at their mission statement, I said it a year ago, it's coming to truth today. So, historical violations, negative impact, lack of enforcement, is not agricultural-based. I believe the premise of the zoning for religious use is for agricultural-based, not to buy an agricultural-based or zoned property to be used for a religious expansion. That's my opinion. My opinion is, and then I'll close, I believe they have been deceitful, and if you want to sue me and come after me, come after me. I believe it's, all these things are proven, I can prove every single one of them. They've been disrespectful to our community, whether it's Walmart, whether it's Hys, whether it's now, kids that come up for weekend retreats at these other peripheral or adjacent properties for church discipline, they're leaving, officers have records, and we have eyewitnesses of these children leaving because they don't like the corporal punishment. That's disrespectful to me. That's, what is that, safety as well? When you see a kid come up out of the bushes or walking down Bachman Valley? So, I believe they're deceitful, I believe it's disrespectful, I know it's unlawful. This is all documented, and this, to me, is reason enough to go back and look at their principal use, where their funding comes from. Go, a UN, I want to talk more, I've done research about UN reports, Ethiopia is a UN member. There have been reports about organizations where bad characters come over here to avoid prosecution for the atrocities that they have done over there. I believe it's highly probable that some of those folks, that's why I put in my questions about non-documented immigrants, that hasn't done nothing to do with color of skin, I don't care. I don't care about theology.
Let me, I do want to give other people a chance. You're not prohibited from sending us other emails and other thoughts, so just because we're out of time for you to speak.
Okay, thank you very much for your attention. Again, deceitful, disrespectful, unlawful, I believe we would be negligent if we didn't really examine the use that is, has been used for, the other areas that they have used religious sites for, commercial entities, whatever. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Does someone else like to speak? Come on up, sir.
Good morning.
My name is Brooks Ruggermer, I'm here with my wife, Ellen. We live at 2903 Aveil Road. We're one of the people that sent you a letter to address some things that were already spoken about and some questions that were asked. When we visited in June of 2018, the buses were parked within 20 or 30 feet of the two houses. One was between, and the others were right up against there. Regarding the sign issue, I agree that a big sign may not be appropriate there, but I'm a crash investigator, and I primarily deal with trucking and busing, but the more notice you give to people that are visiting for this place, the less of the issues that were talked about will happen. I've witnessed people that have missed the driveway, they back up in the middle of the street, the buses couldn't make the turn, so they're backing back out. I think giving as much lead time, using the visibility that's there, will help alleviate some of that. Excuse me. The noise, I want to clarify, this noise starts sometime in the late evening and goes all night long. It doesn't start at 5:00 a.m. My wife is hearing impaired, and it's woken us up at 1:00, 1:30, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. We've called 911, and the sheriff's department does respond. The first time they responded, the deputy that showed up was astonished with, by the hundreds of people that were just walking around, and they had the loudspeakers in this metal building blaring this music that we could hear almost a half mile away. There was no one else in the building. Since then, when we've called and the sheriff's department responds, they'll turn the music off until the deputy leaves, then the music comes back up. So we end up being the pesky person that keeps calling 911, because we can tell, we can tell when the deputies leave, because right away, the music's back up. I think music is a part of a lot of different faiths, and we respect that, but again, it doesn't need to be all night, it doesn't need to be that loud. And then recently, the past couple events they've had, early sunny morning when they all bug out, there's just this non-stop horn blowing as this convoy of traffic and the hundreds of cars leave, and quite frankly, it's just a thumb in their nose at us for us calling and complaining about the noise. So, as Chuck said, there's been a history of non-compliance with our zoning rules and just disrespect to the neighbors, and I'd like to see that addressed before much of this goes forward. And my concern is also, we are all on well and septic out there, and I don't know what a 5,000-person crowd will do to the well system, we're not that far away. So whether there needs to be a study of the water table out there, if they need to bring in water for these events, which is possible, they should maybe be required to do that. they should be, maybe be required to do that. And Attorney Fisher, you had said earlier that part of the issue was your client's ignorance of the laws and the zoning. I think we can understand that. You don't know what you don't know, but they, they know what they're doing as far as the noise and they thumb the nose at us. So, if they're going to not work with the community about something as simple as noise, I don't really expect them to work with us uh, on any of the more critical, uh, needs of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike Hinkle, uh, four-three-six-five Partnership Drive. We own, um, a residence, um, just to the northeast of, of the church. And our house is, uh, in the middle of the hill. We look down directly into the valley. Uh, a valley is a beautiful valley. I don't know if you're familiar with it out there. Gorgeous. Everyone who comes to our house, first thing they say, you have the best view in Carroll County. Unfortunately, uh, well, first of all, I'm glad I'm here today because what I just saw, what the plan is, is shocking to me really. I had no idea the scope and the breadth of what they were proposing to, to, to build there. This beautiful valley we have, and they're going to put these buildings and parking lots there? It makes zero sense. It's really going to ruin, it's going to not be nice for, and it's going to ruin our view. Carroll County has a preference for, uh, land preservation. And, and I just don't see how putting these buildings and this parking lot in this beautiful valley fosters land preservation. Actually, it's to the contrary, right? It, it makes zero sense. We've already touched on the traffic issues. That's a clear safety, public safety issue. Uh, there have been numerous accidents. There's police presence down there. We've already touched on the quiet enjoyment. Uh, I echo what, uh, my fellow residents have said. Uh, it's loud. Uh, it's, 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 uh, persistent. Uh, as, as property owners, it's not something we should have to deal with, right? Lastly, what I, what I don't understand is what is the benefit to the local community and what is the benefit to the local residents? I really don't see any benefit at all. If, if anything, I, I, there's a laundry list of negatives. I'm concerned about my property values and I'm sure, uh, the, the, my fellow residents are also concerned with the property values, but I don't know the demographics, right? I haven't studied them. I don't know if you have either. But I can't imagine there are many Ethiopians here in Carroll County, uh, so that this church would service. Uh, my understanding is it's mostly out of, out of town, out of county, uh, persons who come up, uh, to, to attend the church. So, my question simply is, what is the benefit to me as a local property owner? What is the benefit to Carroll County? What is the benefit to this local community where this church and, and their plan, it doesn't serve the residents of Carroll County? So, that, that's a big time concern of mine along with what everything else that has been said. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ellen Ruggomer. My husband spoke. We live at twenty-one oh-eight at Vale Road. I'd like to touch on what he just said about the out of town visitors. My husband and I went there one morning after, um, being awoken at three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning. To see what we, what was going on and we wanted to know what was happening. And the cars we saw were from Virginia, New York, New Jersey, Illinois, Ohio. I did not see very many, if any, Maryland cars there. They were all out of town. There were three buses. The rest were all cars. So, there's a lot more than five hundred cars. Going to need to park there.
Thank you.
Ken Newsbaum, twenty-four nineteen Bachman Valley Road. I'm a adjoining landowner. Uh, my concern is they had a project this summer they did and they had guidelines to go by, instructions to go by. They followed some of them and then they just went and did what they wanted and they started cutting my trees down for site distance. My concern is they're going to do all this now. Are they going to follow guidelines on these proposals they're going to do? Or are they going to just start doing whatever they want once they get it? Uh, you know, I've, I've dealt with it personally. We haven't resolved the problem yet. They don't want to answer my calls. They don't call me back, nothing. They just leave me hanging. They trespass on me and took my stuff. So, I'm just warning you ahead of time that when you give them a set of guidelines, are they going to follow them?
Thank you. Thank you.
Wilbur Glover, two-oh-four-nine Bachman Valley Road. And I am kind of nervous.
It's okay.
When the first, when, my property backs right up to them. I'm the closest neighbor. When the church first moved in, they, they started out real nice. They were in for about, let's say, two weeks. They invited us down to have a little meeting with what was going to go on. They said they were going to put up one building and use the barn for worship services. And before, before the, the property was sold, the previous owner, we fished their pond all the time, me and my grandkids. And he asked the, the, the new owners if that was possible. And they said, yeah. So, you know, we, we got invited down. They said we could fish and all, everything was great. Then I used, you know, I was actually, I could walk around the property and everything. Then one day I was walking around, I was talking to, trying to talk to one of the priests because there's not much English there. And I walked up by the house and I seen where they were doing groundwork. So, I asked him, uh, what is this for? And he kind of didn't say anything. So, I asked him, looks like these are for restrooms. And he still didn't say anything. So, I guess he didn't understand. So, I gave him a, a male jester of somebody peeing on the ground. So, I guess I either embarrassed him or that's what the truth was. Week later, I was on vacation. I get this tech message that I'm no longer allowed to fish the pine, walk around the property, don't look, don't take any pictures, more or less don't even look in that direction. It's hard not to look in that direction, especially after that. Later on, I seen where they had put in a, a dish onto the back of the barn. I emailed the county and said, I think they're putting a, a deck on without a permit. And the next day I seen they were studding up walls. So, I sent another email. Well, that project is still sitting there. You can see in some of the pictures that the, uh, what they started is still there. So, they don't follow rules, for one thing. So, first it was the groundwork for the, the plumbing, which that probably never got reported because I didn't report it. I just kept an eye and make sure it didn't go any further than that. Then there was a dish on the back of the barn. Now Kenny was saying about the grading out front. I'm sure there was no permit issued for that. I did the, uh, search through the county, um, to see if any permits were issued. Anyhow, I didn't get all the responses back from that. So, I really don't know for sure. But the grading was done, I'm saying without a permit. There is no salt control. The ground is still laying open. It drains down into the screen that was shown on the, on the, uh, the print there. So, like I'm saying, they don't, they don't follow any rules at all. And I seen on one video how, how all the, the people that come say, I, say how nice and serene and quiet it is. Well, that, that's all changed. I can't even sit down on my back deck in the summertime and have a cup of coffee without hearing their music. And there, there is one video, uh, it's a couple minutes long, that shows the new concept of the, um, the new churches and everything. I would like to play that for you, if that would be okay.
Well, we can access it, I think. It's online, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, why don't we?
I, I want you to hear the music. I want everybody to hear the music. Welcome to my world.
Let me, let me, I want to give everybody else a chance, but, um, because we're out of time, but we can access, obviously we can look online and we can listen to that. And look, we, we hear you.
Why I'm, we're here?
I'd rather not. I mean, we'll, we'll check on our own, but I hear you.
I want, I want everybody there to listen to it. I want everybody here to listen.
No, I, I, I want to keep the hearing moving forward. So, we've got other things to do today. This is important. I want to make sure I hear from everybody. So, thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
My name is Judy Gere. I live at twenty-three hundred Bachman Valley Road and, um, I did email my concerns to you. I just want to emphasize the, the, the noise. Um, I've been out on my front porch at eight o'clock in the evening, just reading and I can't. Um, so it's, you know, all hours of the day. Uh, the traffic, I'm not sure who waved, um, you know, with, with this property and this church, but the traffic is atrocious. Um, I've faced the, the driveway, um, of the church and I've had people who pass it coming from Westminster, stop in the middle of the road when they see they passed it in front of my house and make a three-point turn. Um, they've come into our driveway. They've done some damage. But the, the cars that do make the turn coming from Westminster, the traffic behind them, I, I can't tell you how many tractor trailers have laid tire and, you know, swerved around. That is a huge concern. Um, coming out, going five, ten miles an hour. Um, you know, everything else that people have said, um, I agree with a hundred percent. Um, you know, my husband and I love Bachman Valley Road and, um, it's changing and that's unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is John Tramaloni. I live at twenty-four-seven Bachman Valley Road. Everything has been said pretty accurate so far. Uh, a little bit repeating in a way. I keep hearing that, um, this is agricultural property and they're allowed to have a religious building and so they're exempt from any taxes or anything like that. What I don't understand is why they're building a whole community of buildings. They already have a religious building. So, what is going on? Is that, hey, this building is exempt because it's religious. Buildings exempt because it's religious. The buildings exempt because it's religious. My grandfather was a minister. So, if I declare my house as, as a religious building, am I stopped paying taxes and property taxes and all of that? That's my question. Look into which buildings are the ones that's exempt for religious, which buildings are not religious buildings and ought to be taxable at least. I mentioned several times that they violated many violations. Were they, did they ever pay a single penny in fines? What would happen if I violated something? Uh, I don't know what's going on here. I got one last thing. Close your eyes. Pretend this property is right adjacent to your property. Put some constraints into this to make sure that, hey, if you're living right up against these people, how would you vote? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Marion Dell. I live at twenty-four oh-one Bachman Valley Road. My husband Francis and I are here today because our two farms adjoin this property. We have had an, an ordinate amount of trash that blows onto our fields that must be picked up before we plant crops or harvest crops. We have also had numerous people that come to visit the church, come over onto our property without permission. I had one come all the way up to my back porch without permission. They walk across our fields. They come and sit and watch what we're doing in our yard. We also listen to the music, the noise, the traffic. My own family has almost had several accidents because of the driving and the stopping and the pulling out in front of vehicles. So, please, please consider all of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? I think this gentleman would like to make some comments.
My name's Stuart Danbury. I live on forty-one seventy-four Wine Ridge, about a mile away from that place and the music is awful. I mean, four o'clock in the morning you hear. And that to me is bullshit. And, uh, I ain't here to shut the church down, but they don't want, they don't want to obey our laws. They just do what they want. And I don't understand why the county ain't, ain't keeping them under control. I mean, they just, they just do what they want. The guy, the guy was right, uh, saying they'd never put new grass seed down. I work construction. I know. Never put new grass seed or, or settlement control down when they did that. And that was the state right away, I believe, what they did. And they're talking about this parking lot. Where's that water going to run? You know, you're going to have settlements, ponds. You're going to have all that stuff. And, and nothing said about none of that. So, that's basically all I gotta say, but it, the, the traffic's awful. Me, my girlfriend, that T. Boner guy, they must think if you're on, if you're on Bachman Valley Road, you gotta stop. They got the right of way. I mean, they just come down, come out. Ain't no stop sign there. And that sign's way too big, what they're saying. I agree with you. That thing's got to be small. And then, then our churches, we got to have stainless steel to serve food. They don't. I, what I hear, I got people, friends that go back there. They got, they got the meat laying there, bull, uh, blowflies on it and stuff. What, because they do that in Africa, mean they're going to do it here? What's good for us is good for them. And that's basically all I gotta say.
Thank you. Does anyone want to speak who hasn't spoken yet? You're welcome to come to the microphone if you haven't, if you haven't spoken.
I've already spoken and I appreciate your patience. I just thought Ambien White and the records do that.
I mean, we raised that issue, of course.
Because it's going to look like Ron's always, it's going to look like smaller car dealership in that valley.
No, we, we're aware of the issue certainly. Any other comments? Yes, sir, if you want to come back to the microphone.
I'd just like to know, uh, since they didn't let people answer a lot of these questions, if we're going to have another meeting like this.
Yes, that's what we were talking about, a special report. So, they'll, uh, come back with, um, a plan that addresses these issues to the extent they're going to address them and then we'll have representatives so that we can ask them these questions.
Will we fill out the register? We'll get a letter in the mail for that or at the meeting, what date the meeting will be and stuff?
You should get notice of the meeting. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Come to the microphone if you would, because no one will be able to hear you.
You might just think this one's a little silly, but we was talking about signage. The signage for the, um, for this meeting here, I think it ought to be two-sided and it ought to be out close to the road so the public can see it. It's back fifty foot off the road and it's blue and you can't see what it's saying at all.
We appreciate that. Yes. And there'd been another comment about, you know, there's a benefit to a big sign, which is maybe helps people not, not get lost.
Your sign needs to be bigger. The church sign needs to be small. Yours needs to be big.
I get it. I get it. Yeah. Thank you. Well, thank you all for your comments today. We appreciate that. I hope you understand. We've heard what you said. We understand. We're taking all these things into consideration. Jen?
I, I do have a question. I've heard, um, from several about overnight guests. What, um, what conditions are that? Is that something that they are automatically allowed to have?
So, I think that'll ultimately come down to the office of zoning. So, as mentioned, a church or a religious establishment is a principal permitted use. If them staying overnight ties into that religious establishment or that principal permitted use, I'm not sure we could tell them they can't do that. Uh, but ultimately that's going to have to be the call of the zoning administrator to potentially open a zoning investigation and find out, um, the nature of them staying overnight. But I will note that having a residence there, I- a residence there, I, I don't see why they couldn't also use that property as, as a residence.
Yeah, it see, it seems to me that there's a component to this operation that is a religious retreat and not necessarily, uh, uh, what we would, and, and again, I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just saying, you know, when you, there, there's a difference between having a, um, a religious woodstock, you know, and having, uh, worship services. And so, and again, I, you know, I'm not averse to woodstock. Um, I, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't want it to be in my valley, and that's where I, I think these folks are phoning in. So, again, I think, I, I just want, kinda wanna understand more about, um, and Lita, I'll say, I appreciate you, you pushing the information, you know, from a, that you sent to us concerning the culture stuff. Uh, culture stuff, that's a, the technical term. So, um, I, again, I, I just kinda wanna understand a little bit more about, um, is it three or four times a year when this happens, or is it week, is it, is it, is it weekly? Is it, is it weekly and a Wednesday night dinner? I mean, what, what, I, I kinda need to understand the frequency of this a little better. Um, and not, not, and I'm not sure what our response is on that, right? I mean, 'cause again, from a zoning standpoint, uh, yeah, I just, I just kinda need to understand it.
When I raised earlier, I'm, we're here to talk about land use, um, and whether the use comports with what's permitted. And, um, giving something a label and then acting as if you're entitled to do whatever is under that label, you can't call it a church and then have NASCAR races every Sunday. Say, well, it's a church. I'm allowed to have NASCAR. So, and I'm, I'm using an extreme example just to make a point, but the idea is, I think part of what we're allowed to do is to fully understand the use. Does it match up with the label that we're given in terms of what's permitted there, and then what are the boundaries of that land use as it fits within this principal permitted use? And the better we understand those things, and certainly your comments and experiences that you've shared today, um, they help us better understand those things. Um, there are limits to what we can do. We're a planning commission. We're members of the community just like you are. We just volunteer our time to do this, but we're members of the community. We care about the community just like you do. And as I said at the beginning, we wanna, we wanna be fair and balance out these issues. If you were the one that presented an application to do something on your property and your neighbors didn't like it, you would want us to be fair and hear all of the, all of the sides to the story. And that's what we try to do every single time we get together as a commission. That's what we're trying to do here. Your comments are very helpful to us. If you'd like to write other comments and give us further descriptions of things that maybe you didn't have a chance to say today, we'd welcome that as well. We read everything we get. And, um, we're gonna be back again for the special report. I am gonna have to close it down. I see a hand in the back, but I've gotta move this forward because we've...
Two seconds.
Two seconds. I'm gonna hold you to it. Ready? Go.
The church is in my backyard. On Sundays, it's usually between 15 and 30 cars there. That's all there is.
Okay.
They don't need a church that seats 500 people.
Okay. I gotta, I gotta move forward. I gotta move forward. I gotta, I gotta go forward. I got other things to do today.
It's an agricultural, and construction from down below. That one's put in there for the farming community. Do the farmers and the people that go there would have that church to go to them.
I've heard you. I've heard you. I gotta go forward. I appreciate your comments.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, go ahead, Matt.
For these special events, do they have to have a permit for a special event also? Do they currently get permits when they do that?
Yes, so they work with a zoning office and get temporary, um, temporary permits essentially to, to do this, and that is how we come to know how many people are there, because they have to relay to the zoning office how many people are coming, and then work through that process.
All right. I'm gonna move, I've gotta go forward. I gotta exercise my prerogative. I gotta run this hearing in a way that's fair to everybody. Our next item is a recess. We're gonna take a 10-minute recess, and we're gonna move on. We've got two other site plans to get through today. So, thank you all very much.
Please. How to clear. All right, we're gonna go on to the next item on our agenda, which is item fifteen. It's concept site plan. Case number S nineteen dash zero 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 three. Rosane Property Solar Facility. At this point, we say good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Once again, David B. Kraft, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and thank you for the reminder of what time it is. I was going to say good morning, so good afternoon to everybody. David B. Kraft, Bureau of Development Review, back before you again with another site plan. And as mentioned, the next one on the agenda is S dash nineteen dash zero 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 three. The Brazini Property Solar Facility. There are a few representatives with me, and I will let them introduce themselves.
Good morning, John Limerman with RTF Associates, Land Surveyors and Planners. With me is Alan.
Yeah, Alan Watson, Standard Solar, Director of Construction.
And Joshua Woolen, the Assistant Project Manager.
Welcome.
So what this project is here in front of you for is they are proposing a roughly fourteen acre solar facility on this property. And this is before the Planning Zoning Commission as a concept plan, so there is no action required. However, with any site plan, the Planning Commission may consider delegating approval of the final site plan to the Planning Commission Chair. So the property itself is located at five one two four Cleesmo Road on, in Sykesville, Maryland. And so this is the site outlined here. This is Washington Road, which is Maryland Route ninety-seven. Here's Liberty Road here, which is Maryland Route twenty-six, and then you have Cleesmo Road here. So the property is roughly seventy-one and a quarter acres and is located between Cleesmo Road and Washington Road, which is Maryland Route ninety-seven. The property is split by a parcel, as you can see here, which is owned by the power company. There are, I believe, transmission lines that run through this parcel here. There are two residents that currently reside on the property, one here and then one over here. The remaining area of land is encompassed by either farmland or cropland or forested areas, as you can see from the aerial. This aerial, although having been taken, I think back in twenty twenty roughly, is still fairly accurate as to how the site lies. There is a stream on the northern adjoining property, which does have a one hundred year floodplain designation, as you can see, based on this here. And that does encroach onto the subject property. All property road frontage lies within the State Highway Administration right-of-way for Maryland ninety-seven. While outside of Freedom's priority funding area, the site is located within the Freedom Growth Area. And as mentioned, the property itself is zoned light industrial. So the western portion of the property, as mentioned, is butted up against Maryland ninety-seven. The properties to the north and the east are zoned agricultural. So this property and these properties here are zoned agricultural and host private residences. Adjoining to the south is a parking area that is associated with a potential future distribution center that was approved back in two thousand and nine. So as mentioned, what's being proposed now is a roughly fourteen acre lease area that will house a solar facility. In accordance with county code, solar energy conversion facilities are a principal permitted use within the industrial light zoning district. And there are various constraints that are related to such within the zoning code, and that's also within your report. Access to the proposed site is from Cleesmo Road, and this is via an existing driveway that runs back to the site right around here. And you could see it extends onto the property, back to the residences here, right to the, the end of the forested area, right up against where the cropland begins. The access road is shown, the proposed access road is shown extending from that point, there it is, down on the edge of the cropland, crossing over the BGE property and into the gated solar facility compound. And so that will be housed, or I'm sorry, that would be surrounded by a seven foot high chain link fence. For the purposes of construction, because of the constraints of the existing driveway, they will be adding this temporary access drive, which is shown here on the southern adjoining property. The temporary access drive is to be removed and returned to grass after construction has been completed. Since the access drives, both permanent and temporary, propose the crossing of private properties, so this one crossing private property to the south, and this one crossing the private property of BGE, access agreements will need to be established. I believe those conversations have already been occurring, but we will need something finalized with the legal documents before anything gets recorded. On July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, an initial site plan development plan package was submitted to Development Review. The plan was subject to citizen involvement at the August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one Technical Review Committee meeting. One citizen was present at the meeting at that time, but they did not provide any comments. After the meeting, a phone call was received by a nearby property owner who was looking for more information as to what was being proposed, but they did not voice any opposition to the proposal. The zoning office has ensured compliance with the applicable section of code and has approved the plan as presented. Engineering review has reviewed the plan with the utilization of the existing access and will require additional details during the review of the final plans. The Bureau of Utilities has approved the plan. Although there is water and sewer within the area, the solar development does not constitute connections to those facilities, and so the existing residences on site also do not need to connect to those facilities at this time. The Carroll County Health Department has approved the plan. Stormwater management has granted concept approval. Stormwater management will be addressed with level spreaders to proposed conservation areas that'll wrap around the north side of the facility. Forest conservation requirements will be further addressed during the review of the final plan. Water resources will require additional details relating to the stream abutting the northern property line. The plan is exempt from the requirements of landscaping and from floodplain management. And with that, the final site plan will be tested and reviewed for adequacy of public facilities in accordance with Carroll County Code. So to give a better idea as to how the site looks now, I'm gonna go through a few picture slides here. Please note, it seems like I went out on the foggiest day of the year, but beyond the fog, there's not too, too much more. So this is standing on the southern property. This is looking back at that parking area, and this is standing at that parking area, looking into their field. So this is where the proposed temporary access easement will be for the just construction of the facility. These two pictures here are looking at the permanent driveway that's currently there now, that is for the residences. Again, looking at the access on the Cleesmo Road. These three pictures are various pictures through the field. You can see the transmission lines on this picture here. And these three, very foggy pictures are of the site itself. And this one here is roughly where that access drive on the southern property is gonna pop out onto. So it'll come through these trees, and then once the construction of the facility has been done, that access drive will be removed. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure the representatives are as well.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Limerman, do you have anything you would like to add?
A few things, please, thank you. The property is basically pretty ideal for this use, in my opinion. It's, it's very remote, it's gonna be, it's a pretty passive site in use for the property. It's gonna have the temporary construction access, so it's not gonna affect the existing users of the driveway and right-of-way, as David mentioned. And it's gonna be low traffic, once it's built, you know, on the existing driveway also, which is gonna basically be seasonal maintenance and, and, you know, basically very minimal visits. And so there's no parking or anything like that. There's not gonna be any proposed signage, outdoor lighting, any speaker systems to speak of. And the stormwater management was, uh, because a lot of, there's a large drainage area that goes down towards Washington Road, which is a state highway, that stormwater management design's been kind of upgraded to handle like a fifty-year storm event in that drainage area, and which include a dam breach study and everything else. So I think it's, you know, gonna be very low impact on the, on the community. The right-of-ways that David mentioned, the temporary access agreement through the industrial property to the south. There is a ratified agreement from April of two thousand and twenty-one, so I'll make sure you have that, if you don't have it, David, in the file. And the BGE crossing, they're actively working with it, dialogued, and we have, it doesn't seem like it's an issue. Obviously, BGE has been aware of this project since the beginning of, the pre-concept. And that's all I have, if you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
And we'll allow, comment in just a minute. The, is there mowing that takes place on this property? Do the mowers, how do they get access? How often does that happen?
So the, the, the local mowers would come in on the existing gravel driveway. So think a pickup truck and maybe a eight or a ten-foot trailer. And we mow the property maybe five or six times a year, depending on how, how tall the grass gets.
Anybody have any questions? All right, you would like to, I'm sorry.
May I ask one more thing, no?
Hi, I'm Dorothy Thomas.
Hold on one second, Ms. Thomas. If you don't mind, can you make your way over to the microphone so that people that are watching this can hear you? Otherwise, they can't. And in the meantime, Mr. Zimmerman had something he wanted to add.
I just wanted to add that it doesn't seem to be a very big public concern for this project. So we would, while we're here, like to ask that the board would allow that the chairman sign off on the final construction drawings after they're approved versus becoming back to the board for a formal presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and if you don't mind, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Thomas. I'm one of the owners. And Stacy Rigotti back here is also one of the owners for my brother who passed away this January the twenty-fifth. Ken is our original solar guy, and he merged in with Mike Miller, and then they had evidently sold this to this Standard Solar Company with my brother and I's approval before he passed away in January. Now, his two daughters has inherited his half or his deed part of the land. Now, we've been working very steadily with the Standard Solar Company, trying to get this progress in for the community and everybody's needs. I'm very happy to have him here. I'm having some difficulty right now with one of their workers that's representing them for, with me as he revised this diagram that you're seeing right now. I'm not actually approving of it. I do approve of it, but they have moved the site. They have revised it. They removed what my brother and I had signed for, we're working with them. And I think they're gonna redo the site, move it back up onto the north south, northwest side. They kinda muted down to the southwest side, which is way down too far. Supposed to be up on the hill back farther. There is also a diagram where the electric line would go down on the ground, where the original, my brother and I signed, was only two feet away from the roadway going around, wraparound. Now, they got it out to this new site here. I was told nine to eleven feet out, which is gonna go into the farmer's land. And there's only problems, I don't want that with the farmer. So I'm working with the solar people to redo this diagram. I'm sorry, this was brought to this day. George didn't get with the people and got it straightened out before we got here. But we, the owners, definitely would like for them to be here, but if I'm gonna have this headache, no. So they have to redo the diagram, get the solar panel back up over the hill where they're supposed to be, not down on the southwest side of my land, where they're taking up from the farmer's land. I'm a farm girl, I'll stick with the farm guy before I do these solar panels. Unfortunately, I have to have to say that. I don't wanna have to be disturbed to say they can't do their job, I just want them to do their job right. So they have to redo this diagram before I be willing to sign. Our deadline is December the fifteenth with these people. So George was supposed to be working on this, and he did not. He did not get with the engineer, drifter here, to get with how many feet of electrical lines out and other things. So I want to work with him. I want this to happen for our future, for our children's future, our future and her children who's gonna inherit this land. I'm a retired nurse, I would like for things to happen for the community or family to leave a legacy for the community to say, hey, a good change was made here today. So if we can get with the solar company to redo the diagram the way it originally was and put it back off the southwest of the property, so the farmer is not cut off with his land uses, because I will stay with the farmer before anything else.
Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate you raising that.
That's my point. I'm sorry, like I said, I want this to work. We've been dealing with Kenny since two thousand and fifteen, have you not, Kenny? And of course, he merged in with money problems and went to support Mike Miller. Mike Miller became his partner. Then he had more money problems with this ordeal, with being so tired with the county, with the wooderworks. There are so much there and there, I don't know why the wooderwork is such a problem, because it's gonna be grass there. Then they're gonna put marsh down around the fence area, so that marsh in the fence area will be a buffer with the grass. Then you have the grass on the outside, then you got the wood at the area that's going down to the streams and the creeks. So why the wooderworks system is giving them such a hard problem, I don't know.
I think from, from our standpoint, assuming you work all of this out, this thing is on, on the path to go forward.
It has been approved already, because they moved the diagram off away from farther, or that's where the wooderworks is happy.
Right, so we don't, we don't wanna get.
But they need to be back down over the hill there.
We don't wanna get in the way of that.
To the northwest.
Yeah, so I think, you know, hopefully you can work through these things, it comes back to us.
We're starting the process of signing, you know, paperwork and working out things with them and no schedule, and so we've still got that to deal with a couple more days, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Does anybody else have any other comments?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you want to make a motion for the chair to sign off on the final site plan, or do you wanna see the final?
I'll make the motion to allow you to sign off, if that's okay with everyone else?
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion, seconds, to authorize the chair to sign off on the final site plan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You want opposed or abstaining? All right, that stands. Good luck, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much. All right, we'll move on to item sixteen of our.
Would you like to turn it back?
No, thank you, then.
This is Northeastern Supply, Eldersburg, it's case number S twenty-two dash zero 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 six.
Good afternoon, Clark Schaefer, Seventy-Three East Main Street, here on behalf of the applicant. I have with me RJ Klein, who is a regional manager with Northeastern. And I have Jeff Ziegler from CLSI, who is our land use consultant.
Very good, good afternoon, welcome.
So I noticed Mr. Schaefer did not introduce me, so David B. Kraft, Bureau of Development Review, as already mentioned.
I didn't, I didn't bring him either.
Next project, and the last one on the agenda today, is for Northeastern Supply, Eldersburg, file number S dash two-two dash zero 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 six. You are already acquainted with everybody who is here. So what this project is proposing is a roughly fifteen thousand square foot plumbing wholesale facility. And just like all the other projects on the agenda, this one is at, before you as a concept plan, there is no action required. But if you feel so, you are able to delegate final approval of the plan set to the chair. So the property itself is roughly three and three-quarter acres and resides on the south side of Liberty Boulevard, adjacent to the existing regional stormwater management facility. So actually, let me back up here, just to make sure everybody's acquainted with where this is. So here is the site outlined here. This is London Town Boulevard, this is Georgetown Boulevard, and this is Liberty Road, Maryland twenty-six. This is Sykesville Road, Maryland thirty-two. So the property lies in the C-three zoning district, which is commercial high, and is void of any structures or site improvements, as you can see. This aerial is pretty accurate as to what's on the ground today. There is a stream on the south side of the property, but there is no FEMA one hundred year floodplain designations on site. Adjoining properties to the south, east, and west are all zoned C-three and are either vacant, fixed with a stormwater management facility, as you could see on this property, or host a medical facility, which would be this property down in this area. The adjoining property to the north across London Town Boulevard is zoned light industrial and is comprised of a multi-use building, which you may be familiar with as it was before you a few months back. All adjoining lots are located within the two thousand and eighteen Freedom Comprehensive Plan and Freedom Growth Area. The subject property and adjoining properties are all served by public water and sewer. So the plan before you hear was submitted to Development Review on May eighteenth, or I'm sorry, May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. The plan identifies the construction of a one-story, fifteen thousand square foot plumbing wholesale facility. The parking for the facility, as you can see, is proposed on the front of the property with a fenced supply yard residing behind the building, which would be back here. And this will have gated access by way of this access drive here. An amended plat was processed to shift the western property line. So the western property line was here, and it has since been shifted to be right here. And this plat has already been recorded, so that is the new property boundary. Access to the site will be by a new access point from London Town Boulevard, as you can see here, to provide full movement for traffic entering and exiting the site. A portion of the existing concrete median is going to be removed, and that is gonna be about right here. Based on projected trip generations for this use, a traffic impact study is not required per the DPW, Department of Public Works manual. County code states that parking requirements for wholesale establishment is one for every one and a half employees on the maximum shift, or one for every fifteen hundred square. or one for every 1,500-square-foot of floor area, whichever is greater. The parking tabulation identifies that the proposed business would need 12 spaces, and there are 14 parking spaces shown on the plan. So I'm gonna move on to the next slide. So the building materials and colors are depicted as a variety of earth tones with maroon accents. The building is proposing a masonry base that would transition into metal paneling. Architectural details are shown on sheet seven within the plan set and also shown on the screen here. A building-mounted sign will face London Town Boulevard with no other signs currently being proposed. There will be a sidewalk constructed along London Town Boulevard for the full frontage of the property. There is sidewalk currently located on London Town Boulevard at Maryland 32 and ends at Bevar Road. And I'm gonna shift back here, just to give an idea as to what that means. So here is Sykesville Road, and here is Bevar Road. So there's sidewalk here currently. The site will utilize both building-mounted and freestanding lights. Pole lights, which are shown as being 30-foot tall, are proposed at the new parking area and the supply yard. Building-mounted lights are depicted on all sides of the building and have a height ranging of 10 feet to 20 feet. And there is a photometric plan included in the plan set as sheet number eight. The Bureau of Utilities has granted concept approval for water and sewer, but they are going to require additional details for the final review of the plan. The plan will comply with requirements of fire protection. A fire hydrant is being added on the outskirts of the parking, and so that is here. There's gonna be a new fire hydrant added. The building will also be sprinkled as well. Forest conservation for this site was previously completed under a previous development plan. Landscaping is proposed around the proposed customer parking and is accordance with the landscaping manual. So you can see landscaping is shown running along the parking here and kinda comes down this way. And there are various trees that are also gonna be included on the plan. The project is exempt from floodplain code. Stormwater management has granted concept approval. This site will utilize several microbioretention facilities that will feed into an underground stormwater management facility that will be here, and that will, that in and of itself will feed into this facility that is adjoining the property. In accordance with the Site Development Plan Memorandum from the Department of Planning, the proposed land use is consistent with the 2018 Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan, land use designation of commercial high, as well as the 2014 Freedom Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan and the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan. So it complies with all of those plans. And lastly, the final site plan will be tested and reviewed for adequacy of public facilities in accordance with code. And so before we move on, I just wanna give an idea as to the site layout. Again, not as foggy as the last one, but still somewhat foggy here. And so this is the, a general idea as to where the access point will be to the new site. So this is looking down London Town. This one's looking down London Town, and this is standing on the site, looking at the road itself. This is a portion of the median that is to be removed, and this is standing, looking back at the site. There's another picture of the site itself. This is a picture of that adjoining stormwater management facility, and this is standing across the road, looking at the site. Again, this will be a portion of the median that's to be removed. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, as well as representatives here.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Briefly, Northeastern has, has a, to me, an interesting business model. They are largely wholesale, but they are open to the public. They basically serve the trade. And so the zoning administrator, being the meanie that he is, told us that we had to apply for a, and I'm, I'm being facetious, I like Jay V. Wade. But he told us that we were a building supply sales yard, so we needed to go through the BZA. And we said, no, we're a warehouse. He won. So we went, so we went through the BZA. So this has been reviewed pretty heavily. It's, it's a commercial use, in a commercial zone, in a commercial area. So it really, it really fits well. And we're going to request, as the last one did, that at the end of this, after you've, that you consider authorizing the chair to sign the final site plan. I'm not aware of any kinda hanging issues here, and, and the staff report didn't, didn't indicate any. But we're here and, and happy to, oh, one more thing. Northeastern has a, is, is a real investor in Carroll County. They are moving from an existing location in the Merritt Industrial Park, a quarter mile, to this site, so they can enlarge a little bit and own. They're doing the same thing in Westminster. They're moving from the airpark across the street onto an industrial zone land in the city of Westminster. That's why you haven't seen it. So it's a good thing. It's a good investment in the community and provides a needed service to the trade, as well as some retail uses. And we're here for, to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. It's hard to imagine a better fit, honestly, as you said, Mr. Schaefer. I mean, this is commercial in a commercial. I mean, this is what's envisioned. It's great. It just seems to be. This is like the easiest decision I've seen all day today. So from my standpoint, I think this is great. Appreciate what you're doing. I'll turn it over if anybody, Michael, you just, Michael was raising his hand, so just, I'm sorry. No, go right ahead, Jen.
My only question is, there are 14 spaces, I believe.
Right.
How many employees?
We, RJ, go ahead.
So our facility in Eldersburg currently employs four.
Okay.
People.
I didn't take it personally. Okay. I'm good.
Michael?
Trying to recall, there's another plan before us several months back, and there was a Georgetown road impact or extension or widening or circle or something like that. I can't, sorry, can't remember all the specifics. Does that project impact this project in terms of access and where the property line needs to be, or is?
So that's a roundabout, that proposed roundabout, is to be located here. And it has been noted to the developer or the engineer, and I believe it may even be shown on the plans, that if, when this comes in, the county may look to close off all the median breaks along London Town. At that point, the site will only be a right-in, right-out, and if you-
You're aware of that. Okay.
Yeah, and David, I'm just gonna piggyback on that thought, because that, that turn is a blind turn. And, I mean, I've gone now, gone, forget my own personal experiences, because I've got issues and need therapy. But I, I'll just say, it ought to be right-in and right-out initially. Let's get people trained on that, because if you have some, if you, you've got traffic coming eastbound on this road, and I am waiting to turn into Northeastern Supply and make a left turn, but I'm going west, there're gonna be people coming around that turn, and I'm just telling you, that, that is, I don't know how many feet you've got there. If it's 200 feet, that would be, I'm gonna guess it's, it's, I don't know. But I'm just, I'm just gonna ask you guys to really think about, rather than removing that median, I would extend it and just make it right-in, right-out initially, because that, that's, that's, that is a hairpin turn. And, and people are always trying to game those lights in there. You know, do I, do I, I'll, I'll stop moving. I'll stop talking. I, I think that median ought, rather than being eliminated, I think it ought to be extended and right-in, right-out initially. That way, people get used to, to coming to your establishment and knowing, you know, hey, when I leave here, I've, I've gotta make a right to get out. Let's just train people from the get-go. That, that would be my strong suggestion, because again, that, that road is a mess. We had a kid killed a couple of years back on a motorcycle. I've seen some other bad accidents right through there. So, you know, it's, it's, that's a problem, child, for, for the Freedom District.
I couldn't address that.
Go ahead. Jeff, Jeff Ziegler.
So, yeah, I, I will address that. So initially, when we were doing our site development plan, we took or showed that on there as eliminating a small portion of that median, so we can get full movement in. Engineering department said that they wanted to make us aware that when the call, when the roundabouts went in at their two locations, that that was gonna be a full median, and that would go away. Due to construction restraints that Northeastern is facing, building this site with every, all the cost of materials escalating, eliminating that median is really up in the air. I don't have a final decision from them whether they are just truly gonna eliminate it, but we were planning on leaving it on the plans. Chances are, it may not even be done because of financial reasons and, and building the site. But they are fully aware of, you know, that being eliminated at some point in the future, even if they were to do it.
And let me add that I know from, from being involved in other developments in there, that particular area is one of the, is being heavily looked at. Not fast enough, because it should have been looked at a long time ago. Heavily because of the roundabout. There's other developments, that London Town. This particular site is part of a larger proposed commercial development on that larger site.
A hotel.
And, and it was, yeah, exactly. And, and it has been heavily focused on as far as how the traffic's gonna work down there. So I know engineering has, has looked at it and will continue to look at it. And, and Northeastern has indicated they'll, they'll comply with, with whatever the arrangement that's, ends up being down there.
And, and Mr. Schaefer, again, Northeastern's a good employer in the area. We don't want them going anywhere. Please stay. Don't wanna make it hard on you. Good-looking building, bring it. You know, we want more people like you. I just, from a traffic standpoint, man, that, that's a, I, I would prefer to see it right-in, right-out only.
Here's your concern.
All right. Stephen, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm good.
Matt?
Nope.
Anybody else? All right. Do you, I'll, wanna make a motion that the chair sign off on the final?
I'll make that motion that we allow you to sign off on this, yeah.
All right. We have a motion, a second, to authorize the chair to sign off on the final plan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. I assume there's no public comment. There's one gentleman. Did you wanna comment on this?
He's, we brought him.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Good luck.
And the last item is general public comment. There's no general public to comment about general things, so that's done. And I'd be happy to entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I'll make that motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.